Recommit to open session. It is now seven thirty-seven. G announcements, uh, announcement of actions taken in closed session. There were no, uh, actions taken in closed session. Item H, comments from the public. The board will take any and not comments from the public related to an item on the agenda or any item of district business that is not on the agenda. Janet?
No public comments.
There's no public comments at this point. Item I, presentation. Measure Q, financial update.
Um, it's freaking Del Scott. Did you like him? Let me, let me, let me open it.
And Mr. Vega, is this something that we have to do as per, uh, the, uh, the measure Q, um, initiative?
Yes, so now that member that at the last meeting, the board certified the election. So now this is the financial advisor, Del Scott, now is gonna talk to you and share with you what the financial plan is as we move forward, forward with measure Q project. So this is the money piece. When are we gonna be cashing out the funds?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Scott, thank you very much for joining. You should, you should be able to unmute your microphone and, yeah.
Presentation, there's a presentation too.
Oh, please, let me, uh, let me, uh, one's gonna start the presentation.
Hey, Del, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, I believe we can. So, Del, give us one second, uh, we are getting the presentation ready.
Good, thank you.
I don't know if you can see that in your screen as well.
I can.
All right, so, good, uh, good afternoon, Board of Trustees, everyone in attendance. This is our Vegas, it's a super business, and we have here today, uh, Del Scott, which, he's our financial advisor, is gonna talk to you about our financial plan related to measure Q, a newly, our newly certified bond election from, uh, twenty twenty. So, Del, without further ado, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you. Well, first of all, uh, let me congratulate, uh, all of the board and the district on the passage of measure Q. I think it was, you'll see as we go through this presentation, it was really an extraordinary accomplishment. Um, as to that, let me just dive right in, I'm gonna try to keep this as brief as possible, but I welcome questions at, at any time. So if I could go to slide two, please, that would be great.
Thank you.
I believe you've seen this slide before, um, many of you, this is the district's assess valuation, I'm gonna be referring to it as we go through, but the thing that is important is this is not the district's property, this is all the private property in the district, uh, commercial, residential, manufacturing, agricultural, and you can see, looking at the table, that the percentage of growth in this district for the past ten years, eight years, has been quite, quite strong. Even last year, it was almost four percent, the average in the last five years has been three point five percent, uh, and we anticipate that, well, let me slow down a little bit, that that will continue to climb. Turning to the election on page three, this, I wanted to print this, this is not about what you're doing in the next couple of months, but I wanted to point this out to you, it's something I think is really important for you to note. This is a table, and it's not important that you see the names down at the bottom, this is a table of all of the school district and college district, California, uh, geo-bond measures that were on the November ballot, and they are ranked by the percentage of the yes vote. The blue are the successful measures, the gray are the unsuccessful measures, you can see the fifty-five percent rate that differentiates them, and if you go all the way to the right-hand side, you see the red line, and that is the Calexico approval rate. Calexico had the third highest approval rate of a geo-bond in the state on the November twenty twenty ballot. Uh, the only, only two that, uh, had a higher approval rate were Oakland Unified and Inglewood Unified in Los Angeles County. So I think this speaks, uh, speaks volumes about how well the campaign I did, but also more importantly than that, of the broad support that this, uh, measure had among your voters in this, in your community. Let's turn to slide four. Measure Q was the third measure, bond measure passed by this district, there was one in two thousand and four, measure J, all of those funds have been spent. Uh, there was one, um, in two thousand and sixteen, you're probably familiar with, measure V. There were twelve, there are twelve million six hundred thousand dollars of bonds that are still authorized but unissued, but you may recall that one of the conditions of measure Q, the measure on the twenty twenty ballot, was that if it passed, the district would decertify that twelve point six million dollars, and that's why I had our analyst put a line through that to remind us, and that will happen as we go forward, there'll be a decertification process. So right now, the district has, when available to it, the forty-seven million dollars passed by seventy-five percent of the voters, uh, that was passed in November as measure Q. However, just because you have the forty-seven million dollars doesn't mean you need to issue it all at once. The way I like to think about this is, the forty-seven million dollars or any measure that you, that you pass, it's like a line of credit almost, you can draw that money down as you need it, within, within, within reason, because there's some costs attached, so you don't wanna overdo that, but you can see what I'm, what I'm, uh, alluding to as we go into the next slides. So let's look at slide five. This is the plan currently for the first series, known as series A of measure Q. It would be for four point two million dollars, that would provide you enough funding to do some immediate projects and also do the planning for the major projects, and you can see that we've stacked this, so this would be paid off very quickly. These are the, um, these are the, uh, tax rates per hundred thousand dollars of assessed valuation, so you can see in the first year, we're gonna take it all the way up, we plan to take it all the way up to the sixty dollar per hundred thousand dollar maximum, pay it off as quickly as possible, then begin to bring it down because the other measures, the other series will be coming in afterwards. This is the structure of the first bond, this will produce an extraordinary low cost of interest because we're paying it off so quickly, um, and, uh, it will allow us to go forward, uh, soon, uh, with a second series as the major projects get going. So you can see that on page six. Now, these are gonna be now assumptions, um, we're assuming, and again, this is up to you, but we're assuming that in about a year or two, um, that the next series of bonds, well, actually, within the coming year, the next series of bonds, the series B, will be needed as these major projects begin to become constructed, and so, uh, this timing of that bond, that series of bonds, and the amount of that series of bonds is going to be up to the board. Now, we're just showing you projections now, but again, we would want to amortize that as quickly as possible, trying to drive down the interest costs, you can see we've taken that up to sixty dollars for two years, and then brought it down to thirty dollars per hundred thousand dollars as those projects go on, and then you can see on slide seven, if you could turn, please, uh, the remaining bonds sold, again, um, this is up to the board in terms of when and how much, this is sort of an example of what it would look like, but this then would complete the entire, uh, forty-two million dollars, and the tax rate would be under that statutory maximum of sixty dollars per hundred thousand dollars of assessed valuation. I also wanted to show you what is outstanding, the amount of bonds that are actually outstanding. This is not the interest, this, these are the principal amounts that are outstanding for measure J, which was passed in two thousand and four, and measure, uh, D passed in two thousand and sixteen, those are the measures that have already been sold, and so they are still being paid off on the far right-hand side, this is the principal that is outstanding, not the interest, and there's a reason I'm, I'm going down this road, and I wanna explain this to you. As you can see, every year, a small amount of that principal is being repaid, so, starting out in two thousand and twenty-one, there is fifty-three million dollars outstanding, and then ten years later, it's down to about forty million. Now, the reason this is important is, under California state law, in addition to the tax rate limit, there is something called the statutory, uh, debt authorization, um, and that, uh, you can see on the next page, if we can go to it. We talked about a little bit in previous board meetings, what the statutory debt limit is, uh, it says that a district can have no more, in your case, than two and a half percent of its assessed valuation outstanding as debt. So if we take those numbers, that we're back on, uh, slide, uh, eight, and put those, if we can go back to slide nine, we take those numbers, you can see that represented in the gray, uh, bars, uh, the gray columns, that is the amount of currently outstanding geo-bond debt. The red line that is going across that, that is the amount of gross bonding capacity, assuming two and a half percent of assessed valuation, and assuming your assessed valuation goes up by, by a modest amount, in this case, three and a half percent per year. So you can see the problem here. Uh, the problem is, right now, in twenty twenty-one, the difference between the currently outstanding geo-debt, not including measure Q, just what's already outstanding, and the gross bonding capacity is only four point two million dollars. That's the challenge. Now, under state law, they allow districts, um, such as your own, to request a waiver, a waiver of that statutory debt limit, and we have that in process, that is working its way through, um, uh, the, uh, the, the procedures that are necessary to provide that to the state. So if we look at the next slide, you can see what would happen. We would ask the state, uh, for that waiver, I'm highly, highly confident that that would be provided, I've never seen one that was not provided, if we give them all the data that they want. We would raise that statutory debt limit up to the new, where the new red line is, and that would allow us then to issue the remaining or all of the measure Q bonds, um, as I showed in the earlier slides. So it's a little bit of a maneuver that we have to do, it's all provided for in the education code, we have done this numerous times, I'm not concerned, um, about the ability to obtain the waiver, it's just that we have to get all of the pieces of the puzzle, dot all the i's, cross all the t's, et cetera, et cetera. And then finally, I'm gonna get, take you through what's going to happen over the course of the next, um, year or so. So you can see, um, in early April, part of the waiver process is we have to present, uh, the fact that there is a waiver, uh, being requested to the Citizens Oversight Committee, and that's gonna happen in the middle of April. We'll be back to the board in, uh, April twenty-second with a resolution both approving series A, which we don't need a waiver for, and a second resolution that approves the waiver application. Then the next week, April twenty-sixth, we will be submitting that waiver application to the state, we anticipate receiving that waiver in mid-May, that, I'm sorry, in mid-May, we would be issuing the series A bonds, we would be assuming that we would receive the waiver in July, middle of July of twenty twenty-one, and after that time, it is up to you, the board, to decide when you want to issue the second series of bonds, the series B bonds, that could be anytime after July fifteenth, and that waiver is received. So, it's a lot of information, I know, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but I wanted to give you a foretaste of what is coming at you in the next couple of months in terms of approving the measure A, uh, resolution, and also the waiver resolution, so you'll be set and ready to go with the series B, C, or however many you do in the future, and you're not constrained by the statutory debt limit. Uh, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or, uh, or go back over any items that I wasn't very clear on.
Right. You guys have any questions?
Good presentation, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Del.
You're back.
So that was item E, measure Q, financial update and presentation. Concerned agenda, all item J, concerned agenda, all items appearing will be acted upon by one motion without discussion unless any item is pulled for separate consideration and action. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Romero.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Alvarado. How does it, yes, that's.
I'd like to, uh, J, would that concern?
Concerned then, J three is proposal and agreement between Calexico Unified and Perron Hall.
J three.
You wanna pull that one?
Yes.
Okay, so, again, there's a motion on the floor, in a second, would you like to retract your motions in seconds?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
Mr. Alvarado, thank you. So, again, uh, is there a motion to approve the concerned agenda without J three?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Mr. Calderon, J three.
J three. Let me turn on the mic, okay, I'm on the mic, Ms. Burgos. All right, good, uh, good evening, everyone, um, yeah, I asked to, uh, to pull J three, a little bit of history on J three, um, this item, um, came before us on January fourteen, two thousand and one, at which point it was tabled because, uh, the board needed more information. It reappeared on the following regular board, February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, for discussion, at which time, um, as a board would discuss this item, which was furniture, and gave direction to this administration to give us options, options, when I mean options, to go and, and see if we were getting the best price for our furniture. I am quite aware that this school, which is Kennedy Gardens, needs furniture, however, as, um, being responsible for, um, for the safeguard of the public funds here, we want, we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing. It came up that this furniture was three times more expensive than the, um, other furniture. We asked for options, and today we have this item here, again, without options. To me, uh, this administration did not follow through with what the board had asked, and for the record, this is on the record of the minutes that we're approving in this board. So with that said, I disagree because we don't have enough information to make a sound decision whether we're purchasing the right furniture at the right amount of price. So, uh, with that said, uh, I'm not for this, uh, purchasing of this furniture because we don't have the information that we need to make the right decision.
If I recall, the last meeting, we gave the discretion to administration to move forward, and they have moved forward, therefore, I, I make a motion to approve J three.
Well, Richard, if you read the minutes, it wasn't that type of what you're saying that we gave them approval. It says, I think, um, if you quote it, you said that we were market managing, but actually, it was just, everybody had the consensus that was here, that we wanted more information, options.
We gave the discretion to administration to move forward in order, in order to get the furniture in place as soon as possible.
Well.
So I move, I make a motion.
All right.
To approve J three.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Romero.
I'll go ahead and second that, um, just real quick for discussion, this is only solely for Kennedy Gardens Elementary School, correct?
That is correct.
Correct. And there's a second by Mr. Alvarado with discussion. I'm seeing something, um, very interesting. We are purchasing, we are purchasing sixteen thousand dollars of furniture, yet a fifth of that amount is paid in installation services? Thirty-one hundred dollars in just installation and, and services? Hmm. Really? We're gonna pay three thousand dollars just for them to bring and install?
So, yes, if I may respond, so yes, so you have to remember, these companies, they have to pay prevailing wages, you know, for any type of installation that they do in district property, so that's one item that, you know, raises the fees when it comes to installation. So delivery, whether, you know, this furniture come from other vendors, other suppliers, you always gonna have to pay delivery, installation, and, you know, everything that comes with that. So it is part, it is part of, you know, the purchase. Now, one thing that I do wanna, you know, clarify, you know, with the board that, this, the purchase, what the purchase that you're making is through a JPA, a joint power, joint powers and associates consortium. It is, it is a lot of municipalities, government agencies, uh, public entities that have teamed up to create a bid from vendors like Han or All Steel, you know, to provide the, you know, best prices on furniture, and that includes also installation. So, I think we're getting an excellent deal, to be honest with you, you know, given, you know, the quality of the furniture and the warranty, which, you know, this is lifetime warranty on these items, so, I, I.
So, all these items have lifetime warranties?
Yes.
All these items?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is this the vendor that you brought to the district and, uh, you introduced to a lot of people in the district?
This is the vendor that whenever there is a request to come and make an assessment as to the type of furniture that would fit in rooms, classrooms, office space, or any facility, this is the vendor that I, you know, asked to come in and make an assessment. They have people that specialize on ergonomics, they have people that specialize on, you know, where the furniture will best fit, ba, based on the dimensions, so this is the people that I invite to come in and do that for us.
And if I may, Mr. Vega, haven't we been in contract with this particular company, company already?
This is, in twenty twenty, by resolution, the board approved the purchase of the furniture for the high school, for the new buildings at the high school, the A two and A three, so it's the same distributor under the same consortium, it's just that every year that we wanna be part of this consortium, we have to bring, bring it in for board approval every year.
So.
And if I may, Board President, so one of the, the concerns that was brought up by trustee Lorenzo Calderon was in regards to the price, right, and not having options, and so one of the things that is available is the options for the sites, so if they wanna purchase other type of furniture, they can go ahead and, and do so. I think we had a lengthy conversation the last time regarding trying to, to mainstream and trying to have something that is equitable in regards to making sure that all of our students across the district have quality furniture, no different than the students at the high school, with the new buildings are getting quality furniture, you know, we wanna set the same standard, so if you wanna call it a standard, then that's what it is when it comes to, um, you know, all of the sites in the district. In regards to the office furniture, remember there was a concern regarding cost. In regards to Kennedy Gardens, that is furniture that the school agreed to move forward and wanted for their staff. I think concern that came up was in regards to tables, in regards to other, you know, types of items regarding furniture, that there was a concern with no flexibility, so that is one of the things that we have done as far as, uh, the options, uh, Mr. Vega, and so I think if that is a concern in regards to giving the school sites options, then that is there. However, when it comes to purchasing furniture, specifically when it comes to the, uh, the classrooms, we wanna make sure that we have quality furniture that we're putting in there, and like Mr. Vega says, this is part of a consortium, it's part of a JPA, which we're getting incredible rates, Ms. Ramirez isn't here, but she can tell you, there was a comparison that was done, and the cost was minimal, and I think in some areas, the cost was even better when it came to the current company that we're working with, just because they're part of the JPA and part of the consortium as well.
Well, whatever.
A little, let me comment on that, um, a little feedback on, on this whole item. Um, the last time we discussed this, and I don't wanna continue this because, I mean, it's on record, where they said that Willie Moreno's furniture was also bought, I mean, it was good furniture with warranty and everything, well, I actually visited Willie Moreno and visited some of the classrooms, and some of the tops were way different than the originals. So my question is, if we had lifetime warranty on these desks, why didn't all the desks look the same? You're selling us warranty that five years from now won't be any good, we're paying that, and that's, that's the thing that I'm looking at. I don't know if you got into the website, but look at the comments that people have made regarding the warranty of these people. It's, it's in black and white here, so what I'm saying is, I'm not opposed to buying furniture for our kids, but I want the best and the best price for this furniture. I've had pictures of a secretary that is, her desk is falling, and by God, we need to give her a desk, but we're not gonna go buy the most expensive desk just because we, we don't wanna give us options? That's why I'm bringing this up. And this is public funding, it's not, it's everybody that pays taxes here, so we gotta get the best rate for our money.
Can I call for the question, please?
There's a, there's a motion on the floor in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
I'm the tiebreaker, so you guys need to vote.
Well. No, I didn't vote.
What?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 One, two.
Okay.
All those, all those against, say no.
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 Motion doesn't pass, Mr. Gonzalez and I will be talking about this next week, thank you. Uh, twenty percent in just the maintenance and, maintenance and delivery, no, I couldn't go with that. Okay, that was, uh, J three. Yeah, item K, information items, K one, superintendent's report.
Alrighty, well, good evening, trustees, admin team staff, and our community watching via livestream, so I'm excited to report that we have a lot to celebrate. So first of all, congratulations to Aurora High School for being recognized as a state model continuation high school. On Thursday, March the fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, State Superintendent Tony Thurman recognized Aurora High School as a model continuation high school for twenty twenty-one. So this is a great accomplishment, and we would like to congratulate the administration, staff, students, and parents for this great achievement. We're also beginning the second month of our adjusted season of sports, it has been a good month for our athlete, athletics, as various programs have begun full practice. We currently have cross-country, track, football, boys and girls swim, boys and girls tennis, and boys and girls soccer already practicing. Softball and baseball will open their season on Saturday, March the thirteenth, and sideline cheer will follow next week. As of Monday, March fifteenth, we will have a, we will have ten individual sports taking place on our campuses. Our cross-country treat, team was the first to start competitions so far, they have had five meets, our bulldog runners have won all but one of those meets, their last meet will take place next Tuesday at Sunbeam Lake. Our swim team will travel to their first meet on Thursday, March eleventh, to take on the brawly Wildcats, Wildcats in brawly. Our football team will see its first action in over a year, when they scrimmage Imperial High School at Ward Field on Friday, March the twelfth. Their first official league contest is scheduled for Friday, March the nineteenth, as they travel to Central to take on the Spartans. Our maintenance and operations team has done an excellent job preparing our athletic facilities for our teams, and any issues that arise, they are taking care of expeditiously. Work continues. Work continues daily to ensure our safety protocols are being followed, and our student athletes have everything they need in order to safely participate and compete. The months of April and May will see a great increase in activity as the vast majority of contests are scheduled during those two months. Schedules will be adjusted as needed during the course of the season. Uh, it's been wonderful to have our student athletes conditioned and now competing and doing an excellent job of representing our district. I'd also like to congratulate our students and staff who participated in the twelfth annual migrant region six speech tournament. Our migrant students made us proud with their strong performance during the twelfth annual migrant region six speech tournament. We had several students place. Luz Franco, a seventh grade student at Enrique Camarena Junior High School, won first place in the extemporaneous speech category. Way to go, Ms. Franco, and all the migrant speech team participants. We wanna thank our administrators and staff for the wonderful virtual assemblies, which are being held at all of our sites to recognize our student accomplishments. Congratulations to all of our students who continue to be recognized via our virtual assemblies for Students of the Month, Citizens, Citizens of the Month, Perfect Attendance, Honor Roll, and so many other awards. Collexico Unified School District also sponsored our first parent institute for quality education known as BECA. The orientations were held on March first and second from six to seven fifteen P M. Approximately fifty parents participated. This is a wonderful opportunity for our parents, and we hope that more will join the upcoming English and Spanish sessions. In regards to reopening, Governor Newsom reached an agreement with the California legislators on Friday, March the fifth, on a reopening deal, which we will discuss further in our presentation to the board on reopening this evening. Lastly, there will be no classes from Thursday, April first, through Friday, April the eighth. For spring break recess, classes will resume on Monday, April the twelve. Our next regular meeting will be on Thursday, April twenty-second at five P M. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, that was K one. K two, measure V update?
It is actually measure Q.
Say what?
It's measure Q, I'm sorry. Measure Q, so we have a new measure in the agenda?
Well, you got two, you got K two, measure V, and K three, measure Q.
Oh, I'm so sorry, my apologies, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
We have Mr. John Dominguez and Ms. Kim Desert joining the meeting. Thank you. You feel free to unmute yourselves and, and your honor.
Hey, John, go ahead.
Mr. Dominguez, you're on mute, could you please unmute yourself? Thank you.
I think we're good there, can you hear me now?
Loud and clear, thank you.
Okay, great, good evening trustees, Superintendent Gonzalez. My update will start, measure V, and Godfrey, and Godfrey Gymnasium. Godfrey Gym Equipment Installation commenced on Tuesday, March ninth of this week, and it's approximately sixty-five percent complete. The final truckload of equipment is scheduled to be delivered and installed tomorrow. In total, over three hundred thousand dollars of new gym equipment has been approved by this board. The, truly, this facility, I played football for a lot of years and taught American government and economics, and I'll tell you what, it's truly a state-of-the-art educational fitness training facility. It is beautiful. So congratulations on that project. The seven relos and the D O landscape. The district has requested a few changes to the Personnel Commission Office and are nearing, and that, those changes are nearing completion. These changes included some wall relocation to accommodate for a larger conference room, uh, ceiling and electrical upgrade modulate. The interior finishes are being completed, that's paint, carpet, and casework. The head-in work for the, um, for I T, uh, and, and the electrical are being installed currently. Electrical and water changeover, which means that the connection will be completed after the fifth of April to avoid interruption to the administration offices and to the district-wide internet. And when I say after, we are, we are pushing contractor to make that electrical changeover prior to the fifth of April, so we are not without any interruption of services. You, you guys, the district's gonna be out on, on Good Friday, and then the following Monday. The project completion for this, for the seven relos and the district office landscape is expected on or before April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. The, the district office landscape will be completed by April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. You drive by the facility, you can see the, um, the landscape being installed. I'll go now, move on to the Ward Field expansion. Concrete curb V gutters are being completed. The grading is completed. Landscape utility runs through the project are currently being installed. Fence posts are in, and rails will be installed next week. The rerouting of the electrical panel feeding the portable classes west of the, or the portable offices, rather, west of the administration will be moved during the electrical shutdown on the fifth. That, that panel needs to be rerouted, and so we don't wanna, it's, um, district office services, cause we'll have to shut down everything when we move that electrical. The old pump house near the football bleachers is going to be removed and replaced with new controls and a new pump. Installation of the new pump will be coordinated and avoided, and avoid any interruption of, uh, installation schedule.
John, hold on a second, timeout, hold on.
When is the parking lot gonna be completed, John?
The parking lot, which one? Oh, the, the Ward Field expansion parking lot?
Yeah, the modification.
Wa- Ward Field.
Ward Field.
That should be done prior, on or around April twenty-eighth as well. The new pump will connect to the, to the system that supplies the irrigation for the high school football field. The, uh, the administration has, has expressed some concern about the sidewalk, uh, the cracks in the sidewalk at, um, at, at Circle Drive. We wanna assure the district that all contractor-related deviations for the contract specifications have been noted in the punch list, we're very well aware of them, and they will be remedied at the end of the project. Very well aware of, of those cracks, some have been addressed already. The A three building, the project is on schedule for a Silver Creek completion of April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Oakview has ninety days after the Silver Creek completion to finish their scope. Right now, cabinetry measurements by Oakview are being taken. The north and the south wall stucco has been completed. Stairs and canopies will be installed, uh, starting on the twenty-ninth of March, followed by the stucco installation of the east and west side of the building. We can't put those, uh, we can't put the stucco on until the stores and the canopies are installed in this area. The H V A C and fan coils are also being installed currently. I'll move on now to the old teacher lounge demolition.
So when, when is the projected date for A three?
Eight, eight three, according to John, the.
Silver Creek has a, Silver Creek has a completion date of April twenty-eighth, and then ninety days after that date.
Hey, John, wasn't the original date March the thirtieth?
So that would put us.
It was.
The original contract date for, um, Silver Creek's?
Yeah, wasn't it March thirtieth? That was, uh, was being flown around a couple times, that's the date that we were hearing, now it's moved over to April twenty-eighth?
Yeah, you guys created a change order, the board approved a change order, and I'll get back to you with the official of the date, official date of the original date that the contract says.
We, we didn't approve no change order for A three?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you approved a change order for the time, for the time, for the completion, yeah, not cost, for time, and that was approved, uh, Janet, I don't know if you can help me finding when that was, but that was approved, approved in the fall of two thousand twenty, and they called for a completion date for, by Silver Creek for April thirtieth.
That's correct.
I, I can find that for you, right now.
I will get back to you with the official date that the board approved in that change order for time.
I already called that.
So in June, June of two thousand?
That was, I, I want that.
Yeah, I don't know. It was just because of the COVID, was it? Just COVID related?
Correct.
Or could we introduce there were the limes and shifting that were related to COVID, that is accurate.
Yeah, it was for COVID.
Alright.
But not to further extension.
Did, did, did you find it?
We just got a follow up on it.
Yeah, I got April twenty.
Alright, John continues. So April twenty eighth, Silver Creek, Oakview has ninety days thereafter, correct?
That is correct.
Alright.
I'm gonna move on to teacher lounge now. Lead and asbestos building material survey will commence on Friday, April, I'm starting March twelfth, that's tomorrow. That, um, asp- lead and asbestos test is gonna, of course, is necessary that the district perform that to assess for any hazards, building material, requiring abatement, subsequent hazmat, off all requirements. Once we get the information of the, of, if there's any potential for contamination in that building and it has to be abated, then we can bring the contracts for demolition services of the facility. And we're planning on being, bringing that, um, that contract for board approval at the next board meeting. That's the update for measure V.
The demolition for the, uh, old teacher lounge, who is, uh, gonna be demolishing that?
We haven't brought a contract yet for the demolition. We, we're gonna be doing the lead, we have to do the lead and asbestos survey first.
Correct.
Hey, hey, John, you think we can, this can happen before the kids come back to school?
I do, yeah, you know, that's, that's a great question. That, that's the whole plan here. Um, I, I'm really hoping that, that, you know, I, it's not gonna take very long to get these, the survey back. Well, we'll know, you know, within a week, what, um, what the survey says, right? So, so, um, yeah, if we could get the, uh, the authorization to move forward with the demolition. I really don't anticipate the demolition is gonna be very expensive because it's one building. Unless there's a whole bunch of hazardous materials in that building, I, I don't see it as being a, a major, um, expense to the district. So stay tuned. As soon as I get the, um, contract and I get it, uh, I get some proposals, you may be able to do this under COPCA. Then I can, uh, I'll, I'll shoot that over to, um, uh, Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Vega and they'll let me inform the board what the number is.
So, if I may, what I can do as soon as I get the results of, you know, the abatement process, I can, uh, let Mr. Gonzalez know and maybe if we bring a recommendation, maybe to have Oakview, since they're already there, do the demolition and if you approve, you know, we can bring it back as a ratification item. Just to get it done within this month, if that's okay with you, I mean.
But we're, we're having a special meeting, so.
Okay, alright, no problem.
I don't wanna do anything by word, should be in writing.
And, and Mr. Kellerman, I, I don't know when the, um, when the kids are scheduled to come back, but, but, you know, this could happen fairly quickly and it could happen April, May, and it could happen in the very first part of May or that building comes down.
Well, they, I know for a fact that they go to spring break on April first through the.
Through the eleven.
So you have a whole week there.
Okay, that's helpful, yep. I'm gonna, uh, you know, I, I can talk to Oakview and, and put them on notice that if, um, see where, where they are with this and, and they could, uh, you know, gear up to be able to bring that building down during that time.
What's that? Oh, no, um, I'm just giving you a date, I'm not giving you, cause it takes five to say yes.
Well, I know that, I get it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't want, you know, yeah, we'll bring that up.
No, I understand. I just want, I wanna move things forward, you know, according to what you guys are looking for and also, you know, what's.
Okay, uh, Kim, you may wanna take over from there, cause John is there but not there.
I think he's, I think he's lost his service. Um, it's, it'll take about ten days to get the test results back, cause he's gonna sample it tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, when is your special meeting in April?
On the, uh, for, the first one on the fourteen.
The fourteen?
Yes.
Okay. That, that gives us good timing, that's great. April fourteenth is the special board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we'll work backwards towards that to see if we can have, uh, something at the agenda.
That's great, okay. Um, Caesar, Mr. Vega, would you like me to move into the measure Q update now?
No, we're not there yet.
What's that?
No, we're not there yet.
Okay.
Anything on measure V, any questions on measure V?
Ladies and gentlemen, any questions on measure V?
No.
No.
No? Okay, no, we're done with measure V, measure Q?
Okay. Um, let's see, so Padre Environmental Services, um, out of Sacramento performed the phase one in the Title V California Code of Regulation Site Reconnaissance approximately two weeks ago. Um, that phase one is, 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 is required by, um, education code, uh, in order to determine if there are any areas of concern on the existing school site that need to be mitigated. In addition to that, the Title V California Code of Regulation Survey also takes a look at any type of potential environmental hazards that might need mitigation and special studies. Because this project, it sounds a little complicated, but it's not exempt from CEQA. We have to perform a mitigated negative declaration on this project. So the next steps will be that we anticipate that the, that the Title V, uh, California Code of Regulation Survey and the phase one envi- environmental site assessment will be sent to us in approximately four weeks from today. And, um, at that time, we will then review the document. That document, as far as the phase one environmental site assessment goes, will make the recommendation. That recommendation is gonna say either further action or no further action. If there is a further action requirement, which I believe there will be, and it's, and it's because of the, in our, in our record search and in our historical records for this property, prior to the school, it was an ag fill. And some of the chemicals that were, that were applied to agricultural fills back in the fifties and the forties, they have an extremely long life, a shelf life. So the Department of Toxic Substances Control requires by statute, any property that has a history of agricultural use that they have to go through what's called a preliminary environmental site assessment. So it appears at this point that we will be entering into, uh, a voluntary cleanup agreement and subsequently going through the Department of Toxic Substances Control process, which is necessary for CDE approval and getting our letter from the Department of Education that says the project has been approved. And then that's our ticket then to go get funding from the Office of Public School Construction. In addition to that, um, we also have developed an RFP that's out on the street from the, for the Division of the State Architect Inspector Record Services. Mr. Sanders' office is working on the design plans for the locker room projects and the high school master plan projects. The proposed high school locker room project will be what we're proposing, what we're recommending to the board tonight, is that's the first project the team will roll out under the measure Q new project phases. Regarding the, uh, the master plan projects, uh, at the high school, we also have been working on educational specification program development. We've had several programming and planning meetings beginning, they began on December ninth, twenty twenty. And we will be presenting the proposed plan at the, uh, special board meeting, um, on the high school construction, um, high school construction master plan. Stay tuned on, on more information from the DTSC and the phase one environmental site assessment. I anticipate, like I said, we're gonna have to go through DTSC. That process is an arduous process, just preparing the board. It can take, uh, dependent upon the level of, um, mitigation. It could take from a year to eighteen months to go through that program. That, that, that pretty much wraps up my measure Q update for now.
Hey, John, maybe it's too early to talk about it, but all these, uh, buildings that you're taking samples of, can we name the buildings that might be demolished as a result of, uh, measure Q? And also, do they qualify for seismic, uh, funding, uh, these buildings that we're knocking down?
Yes, great question. So the buildings that we're knocking, that we're gonna demolish, we are putting through the seismic program because they're the same structural, um, type that, that the Culinary Arts Academy was. So, I, I think it's important to differentiate, um, the different types of funding, cause that's what this is about. Uh, wha- what I wanna say is that, that the high school modernization, your eligibility, the high school has quite a bit of eligibility. As a matter of fact, you have, uh, a sixty percent share by the, uh, by the state and a forty percent local match requirement to participate in OPSC SAB funding. I say Office of Public School Construction and State Allocation Board funding. That sixty percent share in twenty twenty-one is fifteen million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. The, the local match is ten million, five hundred and eleven thousand for a project total of twenty-six, roughly twenty, twenty-six million dollars. So what I have to say about that is your new construction eligibility was used up in the two buildings, A three and A two, and also, um, force of that was culinary. But, but the good news, the good news is that new, the seismic program does not use a school district's eligibility. It's standalone, you have to have the fifty percent match, and you do. But you don't have to have new construction eligibility because you're coming in under the facilities hardship program. So that's the benefit, and Licho, you're right, that is a very strong point. And that is where the beauty is, because remember, just like the culinary arts, when you come in through the facilities hardship program, your school district will go to the top of the list for funding. So you'll get funds faster than you would, because there is no, there's no money left in the kitty under the prior bond at the state, but there is money in the seismic program. So we'll get funded faster, and as a matter of fact, like I reported last time, there should be a bond sale from the state in May, which means that the district should receive about a million dollars of funding on the Culinary Arts Academy sometime in June. So, so, um, that, that's, that's the, the answer to your question is that, yes. Um, we have to go through, in order to get that funding, we've gotta go through the seismic program. And that's what the plan is for the new construction at the high school.
John, I, I, I think it's for the board, and for the record, I think it's important, John, to, when it comes to A two and A three and Culinary Arts Academy. One thing is the seismic facilities hardship program. And the other one is, the other application that we have on each of those projects is a regular reimbursement of, you know, subject to a state bond passing. So we will be getting funding on the Culinary Arts Academy, the twelve classroom building and the sixteen classroom building from two different pots of money. Ron is one, right?
Yes.
So, so for the Culinary Arts Academy, you're looking at two pots of money. That is facilities hardship and the regular state reimbursement, the, you know, the match, the sixty cents on the dollar match for every dollar that was spent there, alright?
Right.
Under the A two and A three, those buildings were not originally, those are brand new buildings, we didn't replace any. So those A two and A three, we will get money someday, but those buildings go to the bottom of the list because they're not priority funding. They're not seismic compromise or we didn't replace them. We didn't replace buildings that were seismic compromised with buildings that, you know, with new buildings. So I just wanna make sure that the board understands the two different dynamics because, you know, we're not getting state funding on A two, on A three until a bond passes and our turn is next in the list for funding. Right, John?
That's correct, we're, and we're way down there, I mean, we're, we're about three, four billion dollars away from being funded right now. On, on those, on those, uh, new construction applications in the regular program.
Alright. Alright, so board, um, I hand, I gave you a handout, cause I do wanna talk about, you know, uh, modernization under measure Q. I need Gavin Williams, please, I need Gavin Williams and Jimmy Sanders, please. And I need this presentation. Okay, bear with me for a second, board. So again, so what John talked about, he gave you pretty much the ins and outs about, you know, the process to get CDE approval under new construction. So under measure Q, we have two different, two different types of construction projects, modernization and new construction. So what I'm gonna talk to you about is modernization right now, alright? So. With her? Give me one sec. So again, the reason why this is, you know, for your review and approval today is because, again, we, um, this is part of bringing back the ninth graders at some point. To bring back, to bring back the ninth graders, we require locker room space, adequate facilities for the ninth graders so that when they come in, they have the facilities that they need, not only ninth graders, but everyone else when it comes to PE and sports, sports locker rooms. So we are putting, we have put together a modernization program that entails, uh, modernizing Godfrey Gym and Varner Gym. There? Alright, so, but this project, the beauty of this project is that, you know, it was not just the project management team alone that put it together. This process went through a, a review and we received a lot of data, a lot of input from the high school itself. So I have the pleasure of inviting Ms. Gavin Williams, our principal at the high school, so that she can further expand on the type of input, the type of, you know, feedback that we received that ended up in putting together the project that we're about to present to you. So, alright, so next, oh, I have the clicker. Alright, so again, School Side Solutions, our project managers, our architects, Sanders, Inc., and district administration, that it's, you know, uh, spearheaded by, you know, myself, Gavin Williams, uh, Elisa Ramirez, which she couldn't be here. So all of us together work into, you know, developing the education specifications for this modernization project. So Ms. Williams, you wanna talk about, you know, the entire ed- ed- uh, education specific specification process?
Thank you, Mr. Vega, good evening, board, and good evening, uh, to everyone. Um, thank you for, um, allowing us to share information on this very exciting and important project at Callexico High School. Um, well, I'll start off with a, a little bit of, just a little bit of background and history. Um, I'm so excited, I recently sent even, I think it was last night, an email to the team thanking them because this started off as an idea, it started off as a need, um, the, the changes, uh, that were seen in Godfrey and Varner, obviously as a need as, uh, we, our, our teachers, uh, work with students in the gym, outside the gym, with athletics. Uh, teachers have been, PE teachers and athletic coaches, athletic directors have always been very vocal, um, in advocating for student needs in the last five years. And so was, what once was a need, we're seeing now and hoping in the near future, we're going to address those needs with, uh, you'll see here in a little bit. And so, um, the planning process, I'll jump to the planning process a little bit, is that, um, for the last two years, I've been a part of the meetings with, uh, with John Dominguez, Kim, and everyone, Mr. Sanders, um, for the most part, ninety percent of the time, and sometimes I can't make it, but every, bi-weekly or weekly, uh, we do meet and discuss, um, any project that's taking place at Callexico High School. And my role is to, um, make sure that I communicate the teacher needs, the students, our challenges, uh, interruptions to the, potential interruptions to the instructional program. Um, and then, you know, meet with my team and come back with some recommendations. So I'm very grateful that we have had a strong voice, um, in terms of this planning process. Um, going now to the first bullet, support student physical education program and team sports activities. In this project, um, I made sure that I communicated with our past athletic director and our current athletic director and administrator regarding, um, just the needs for our athletes every, 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 uh, for every season and for every sport. And based on those needs that they expressed, we came up with some recommendations that I took back to the team from, you know, supervision, from what works for coaches, in terms of gatherings, how many athletic lockers would we need, um, at its max year, when we have a lot of kids participating? We looked at numbers for the last four years and, you know, made a recommendation, um, to the team as to how many athletic lockers we wanted to see if we would be adding max, max year. Um, also, some of the recommendations that were very strong, that had always come from the team, uh, the PE teachers and the athletic coaches, was our kids always need lots of drinking fountains, they need restroom stalls, they need space, we need storage. All of these, uh, topics were communicated to, to Mr. Sanders and John, um, and they kept making changes, making changes until we felt that, you know, it was a good design. Um, we took this design to the PE teachers and the athletic director from last year and, um, and this year to get a final input and any final recommendations. And they were really excited and very, uh, very happy to, to see, you know, this project moving forward and hopefully very soon coming to fruition and, and having our students and our athletes using that space. Overall, the, this project and the next slide that they will explain is envisioning the ninth graders, um, coming to our campus. So they'll share with you, uh, the PE locker space and, and what it includes. And that is with, again, including our ninth graders, including a very big class of ninth graders that we hope we have. Uh, Callexico High School, at a, at our highest, we've had a class of, uh, eight hundred and fifty students in the last five years. And the lowest we've seen is, uh, in the six, in six hundreds. So with that in mind, PE lockers were planned and, uh, and then needs for the students in the locker room from the supervision perspective to other type of needs for students, to the storage as well, to exits and doors and so forth. So, um, I think I, that's on my end, unless you have any other questions, you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, I don't think we have any questions now, but maybe a little bit later. So, so I'm gonna invite, um, our architect, Jimmy Sanders, uh, to speak about the design. You heard Ms. Williams say, you know, talk about the, the number of meetings and the amount of work that it took us to get to this point. So what we, what you see before here is an actual proposal design for what we are looking to build. And again, it has gone through a vetting system with input. And this is the end result now for you to review and give us your blessing as well. So Jimmy, uh, are you there? Is Jimmy Sanders online?
Yes, Mr. Sanders, if, if, Mr. Sanders, if you could please unmute your mic, thank you very much.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Alright, Mr. Sanders, so take it away from here, please.
Okay, so that's, this, uh, first slide that we'd like to show you is the, the site plan of Callexico High School. And we have, uh, Godfrey Gym and Varner Gym, uh, highlighted because that's the scope of this project. And, uh, in addition, we also have an area off to the east side of, uh, Varner Gym, uh, north side of the basketball courts, where we would be installing a proposed, uh, drinking station, drinking fountain station. So, um, uh, later on in the, uh, in the presentation, we'll actually show you a, a layout of the proposed, uh, drinking fountain area. But we wanted to show you on the site plan how those drinking fountains are strategically located to not only serve the two gymnasiums, but the entire, uh, athletic fields and, and, uh, courts. Okay, uh, next slide. So this next slide shows the, um, the scope of work at Godfrey Gym. And as you're all aware, uh, the gymnasium or the assembly area, uh, the fitness center has already been modernized. And so the scope of this, uh, project would be to modernize the, uh, locker rooms located on the north and south side of the, uh, fitness center. And so that scope of work includes, uh, replacing the, uh, exterior windows. It includes, uh, new ADA, uh, ramps and stairs, uh, new display monitors in the locker rooms, all new architectural finishes inside the locker rooms. There's new student restrooms, uh, new student, uh, shower and all gender restroom. We have a coach's office and a supporting restroom. Uh, there's, uh, uh, high and low drinking fountains and there's a data and mechanical room to support the Godfrey Gym. And there is a total of a hundred and twenty boys' lockers, boys' sports lockers and a hundred and twenty girls' spoits, sports lockers. So we maxed out, uh, both of those spaces to support the sports programs. And, uh, those lockers are, are nice, uh, uh, sufficiently sized, uh, eighteen inches wide, thirty inches tall, uh, so that they support, uh, team sports. Okay, uh, next slide. This next slide shows the, uh, an enlarged, uh, locker room, boys' locker room and girls' locker room, so that you can see, uh, how the lockers and the different spaces are laid out. So in the, uh, boys' restroom, we have two urinals and then, and a toilet. And then in addition, uh, down in the, um, the, the southeast corner of the boys' locker room, there's, you'll see the, the, uh, boys' shower and, uh, restroom. Uh, so that if, if a student wanted to take a shower, they, they have a private, uh, uh, a shower stall and, and restroom. And then we also have a coach's office and supporting coach's restroom. Okay, and then on the girl's side, uh, which is on the south side, it's a mirror image of the boys with the, with the exception of the number of toilets. Uh, we have a total of four, uh, student toilets for the, um, the, uh, girl's side. Okay. Uh, this next slide shows the scope of work for the, uh, Varner Gymnasium. Now, as you're aware, a few years ago, we, we modernized the, um, assembly area of the gymnasium and the public restrooms on the, on the north side of the gym. And so this project would be, uh, uh, it would include the modernization of the locker rooms, both boys' and, uh, girls' locker rooms. And, um, those locker rooms would support a combination of the PE lockers and the remaining sports lockers that, that we needed. So in, uh, in summary, for, for the locker room layout, we have a total of nine hundred girls' lockers and nine hundred boys' lockers for the PE program. And then we have a, a total of sixty, uh, girls' sports lockers and sixty boys' sports lockers. So when you add the sports lockers at Varner, the sixty to the one twenty at Godfrey, we have a total of a hundred and eighty, uh, sports lockers. And so that was, uh, uh, as Ms. Williams mentioned, uh, you know, that was part of the, the process that we went to, to figure out how many lockers we needed to support the sport programs and also, uh, CH nine, uh, coming over to the, to this campus. So in addition to the, to the number of lockers, a few of the features, we have, uh, new display monitors, message boards inside the locker rooms. We have, uh, um, coach's office to support, uh, five teachers, both on the boys' and girls' side. Uh, there's a new student restroom, a new student shower, uh, new high and low drinking fountains and a new PE equipment storage room. This next slide is a, uh, an enlarged area of the locker room. So you can see, we, we have the sports lockers color coded, the, the, the burgundy and the PE lockers, uh, color coded to the tan color. The, the layout of those spaces, uh, we have, uh, both. The, the layout of those spaces, we have both boys' and girls' student restrooms and then we have a coach's office and a coach's restroom and shower. And, and then there's also a designated student shower in case a, a student wanted to take a shower. And then, and then down at the bottom or the south end of the locker rooms, we have PE storage equipment space. Now, this, this, this next slide is the water cooler shade structure layout. So we have a total of four park-style bubblers. And each one of those has two heads on it, so there's a total of, of eight bubblers. And those would be supported by a, a standalone chiller unit so that those bubblers are all served with cold water. And the entire area is under a shade, so it's all shaded. And then we have some adjacent benches to create a nice break area, exterior break area for the students.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanders. So obviously, we have a design and obviously, we went through a process, you know, like I said, to put this plan together. But how do we make it happen? So the process, again, for modernization, and I will let John Dominguez, John Dominguez, project manager and Kim Desert to talk about. But, you know, we have to follow the same guidelines than any other modernization project that we've had in the past, division of the state architect and plan approval and all of that. So John, do you want to expand on that? Yes.
Back to, and I'm sure that Mr. Sanders can't answer, we're trying to be Ms. Williams. Godfrey Gym, it's beautiful, I mean, you have bicycles, you have everything. My question is, oh.
Once again, I'm sorry, Ms. Burgos, that won't happen again. My question, I mean, this gym looks really nice. I mean, it's going to be a state-of-the-art gym. I mean, you got TV monitors and everything. But my question is, where are we standing the wrestling team? Because this used to be the stronghold, well, is the stronghold for, for the wrestling team. So my question is, again, what are we going to do with the wrestlers?
Excellent question, Mr. Calderon, and we have a plan for that. That is a part of the new construction process that we're looking at. And Jimmy or John, do you want to talk about that? And maybe Ms. Williams, you know, you want to talk about the planning process that we are currently working on and designing for a future building that's going to be exclusively designed for wrestling? And I believe, what was the other athletic, Ms. Williams? Wrestling and what else?
Or our strength and conditioning, no, not strength and conditioning, our yoga class. I want to add, great question, I want to add that when we first got green light to at least start brainstorming and, and putting some ideas at the site level before sending them to the district office, the first person I reached was Mr. Tavares, our wrestling coach, because I knew it was going to impact his program. And I know that we have a very strong program, they've done an amazing job. So him and Ms. Rodriguez, last year, I think it was the last year when we started or a year and a half ago now, amongst the three of us had several meetings. We even visited some, some local gyms and got some ideas of what we wanted to recommend to the district office. Mr. Tavares and I discussed that, how the wrestling program was going to be impacted and options for the program while Godfrey was in construction. And so I'll, I'll, I'll share those, I'll have Jimmy share those possible options. But he was very involved and he was very, the three of us, again, Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Tavares and I discussed several times, you know, the impact and, and the options that could be available later on for wrestling. And, and overall, I'll, I'll finish with saying that there was a discussion even at some point, should we recommend to the district office only half of Godfrey Gym and keeping half of it, you know, still the wrestling space? And we played with that idea, or should we recommend to district office the entire Godfrey Gym be renovated as a state-of-the-art, you know, facility that we're seeing right now as a workout space? And at the end, we felt that serving our kids from eight to three during the PE program was, was very important, not to undermine our, our, our sports or, or wrestling program. But we felt that having that space for PE from eight to three was extremely important. And then if the district could later figure out a, a way to, to give a space to wrestling, then we were all for it, to giving up that space. And sure enough, they have a proposal for a wrestling space.
Jimmy, you want to expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so we, we will be presenting to the board what we call, we're referring to now as Building Five. We, we gave this building a, a name in our, in our last meeting or proposed name of the Dog House. And so, so this building would be located out on the west side of the pool and it's part of our new construction project. So when we bring the, the administration building, the multipurpose building and the two steam labs, we'll also be bringing the Dog House floor plans for you to review. And the, the proposed use of that Dog House is the, is, is two large fitness rooms that would support your wrestling program and your yoga, physical education programs.
So I know that board, I, I've asked, and, you know, through my Friday updates, I've asked for a special board meeting exclusively on facilities, I believe April twenty-nine, if I recall correctly. So because that, you know, we want to present to you exactly what we are planning to do under Measure Q, new construction. This is modernization, but we do have a plan in place. And, and look, everything that we're doing under Measure Q is going through Ms. Williams and her team. They are the ones that, you know, they're the drivers behind this bus that's driving us into what is it that they need so we can meet the education specifications that, you know, that they require in the program. So there is a plan that we're developing and we are hoping to bring it to you so that you can have a better idea and a better understanding at our special board meeting, hopefully on April twenty-ninth. I think that's the date that I, that I'm requesting. Any more questions from the board thus far? All right, so I'm, I'm going to let John talk about, you know, how do we get there? How do, you know, Jimmy, you know, can do so much as far as developing the plans, the engineering and all of that, but the actual procurement process, approval process, that's a project manager. So Kim or John, you want to take it from here?
Sure, thank you, Caesar. Yeah, pleased to talk about the planning to completion on this project. I'll, I'll start with, with the, with the approval process. And once, once Jimmy finishes the preliminary plans, which is, is coming up here, the design will be complete i- in March. We'll submit the preliminary plans to the Department of Education for preliminary plan approval. But I'm going to ask that they, that they approve it on a final plan approval basis, which means that I will be filing the, the categorical exemption. This project is exempt from CEQA because we're not adding, we're, we're not adding more than ten classrooms. As a matter of fact, we're not adding any classrooms to this project. And it's a minor addition of basic upgrades to your existing facility. So it will qualify for, for Class fourteen exemption. So our, our design is complete in March. Our DSA submittal will, after the plans come out of CDE, California Department of Education, in May, we submit to the DSA. And we anticipate the DSA approval happening in August of 2021. Then we bid the project in September. Our, our board will approve the project in October. And we start construction in October. And we are planning and contemplating an eight-month construction duration. We have a project budget of approximately six million during this time. And right after we get CD, let me back up, the six million is also, that includes soft costs, that's total project cost. Once we get CDE approval, then I can submit the public school construction for funding, for placement on the unfunded list. And yeah, we start, we start our project in October of 2021. Questions?
Questions, yes.
Great presentation, thank you very much.
So board, can I have your approval to proceed? That's what I need from the board. This is the plan, modernization plan. So all I need is your green light so that I can proceed with this project.
That's my motion.
Got one more question.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
This is not going to take the forty-seven million dollars, is it?
No, sir, no, this is, look, the, the most that we can spend on this is six million. That's all in, it could be less. But we're giving you a rough estimate. We don't know what the real price will be until we go out and bid.
Well, I second that motion.
Well, we'll just give it direction.
Well, actually, I just approve it.
Kiki. I mean, are you okay with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, thank you, board, thank you for your support.
Don't we need to vote on it?
I'm sorry, who's?
Second and potential, I call for the question.
Second.
Hold on. This was just, these were just.
For information.
This was, these were just the updates, these were not motions. Yeah, this, these were not motions, these, these just are.
Right, but what I'd like is your approval to proceed with the project as presented, not to enter into a contract or anything. We will bring, you know, contracts once we go out and bid and everything. But I need your permission to proceed with the project as presented. And what I hear is yes.
Action item?
Yeah, exactly. So what you're doing is you put it under, you're putting under an update, but you want us to approve it without us voting on it because this is not, we cannot vote on something that is not on the agenda.
Understood.
Yeah, just for the, for the next time also as well, something that, that I think is missing off the Measure Q is our committee. We have a committee also as well, and that's one of those big things. To me, you know, I don't want to start off on the wrong foot, you know, either. I, I think we need to get our community involved also as well and let them know exactly what's going on. But, I mean, other than that, I, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yes, this needs to be, this needs to be as an action item because it, it needs to show that we voted, who voted yes, who voted no.
Got it.
And for what purposes.
Yeah.
I like it, I, I like it, but if we're going to spend this much money, it needs to be, it needs to be done in the right way.
Yeah, Mr. Alvarado is correcting the fact that with the other measure, the committee, the committee committee was very involved and they would come and give us presentation and everything, and it would be not right if we started without, not, not them participating. So.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Move to extend this meeting to ten-thirty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by motion by Mr. Calderon, second by Calderon Junior, others in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes five-zero.
All right, thank you, Ms. Williams, thank you, project management team, everyone, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, great presentation.
Okay, for ROP committee presentation or update?
Well, last, good evening, everyone. Last, last month, we had a presentation from some of the IV ROP staff. They, the ROP staff continue to work with our staff and students. The career specialists have continued to contact all the CTE teachers and offer support and services to the high school in Aurora. They have met with Ms. Yvette Hope to discuss possibility of collaborating and developing interest surveys for her to send to the students to help them pick up workshop topics. Career specialists have also provided a Thriving Thursday workshop discussing the topics of self-care during quarantine to several students. The career specialists have also assisted several students in scholarship applications and resumes, and that's all I have, Mr. Calderon.
Thank you, Mr. Calderon Junior. That was K four, ROP committee update, L cap committee update?
Right, so for that one, just want to announce to the board that part of the L cap process is that we do meet with the community. And several of you have been to the L cap meetings when they were physical. And so we're doing Zoom at this point. But we do have a great parent stakeholder participation. And so again, it's to be transparent, show the community what the L cap is and work towards talking about our goals and also getting input to create those goals and bring them back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. That was K four, L cap committee. K five, accounts payable pre-list, does anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
No questions.
Thank you. And K six, board reports, these are informational reports from, by board members, no action taken. Mr. Romero?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Romero, Ms. Magallanes.
I would like to share that board members will be conducting walkthroughs of school sites during the week of March fifteen to gather data, questions and concerns. And as board members, it is our utmost duty to ensure the safety of students and staff in the event of any forthcoming reopening. And I also want to give a shout out to every administrator, school leader, teacher, classified staff, that we see you, value you and appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magallanes, Mr. Alvarado.
I just want to give a thank you to Abigail earlier, she presented for us, she did a great job. It feels kind of good to actually see students giving us updates and stuff like that. Gives us back to kind of, it's not normal, not, not the new normal, but you know, it, it's, it's amazing. I also want to say congratulations to our debate team, they went out and did a great job. You know, our teachers also want to go ahead and, you know, say keep up the good work. It's not easy, but you know, hopefully soon we, we do get back to normal. And just be safe out there and hold on and hopefully we get back to the, the normal now pretty soon. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado, Mr. Calderon Junior.
Good evening, everyone. Again, like my peer, Alvarado, Abigail, you did a good job. And I'm glad to see faces again and, and see what's going on at your site. Also congratulate all the athletes that are out there actually competing and they are actually up there and ranking. So again, thank you. We have our first scrimmage tomorrow. It's against Imperial, so I don't think the community can attend, correct? It's just a scrimmage and hopefully we'll be able to start attending our football games soon. So with that said, again, stay safe and see you soon.
Thank you, Mr. Calderon Junior.
And again, thank you for joining us on this Callexico Unified School District Board Meeting. It's, it's hard to say, but I believe a year ago, it was the last meeting that we had where people could come in and, and participate in our meetings. So it's been a year, it's been hard on everybody, it's been hard on, on anybody that, that is actually alive today because once this COVID nineteen virus came out, it changed out of our lives. However, we have demonstrated as a board, as a district, that we can, that, that we can win, that we will prevail and that we already overcame with the, some of the obstacles that we had. We had our, we have our Zoom classes, we have Google classrooms, we have a fully functional district office, a fully, fully functional schools. So we have done a good job. So I would like to congratulate everybody, part of our district for doing a good job and for making sure that our students have been educated all this time despite the obstacles, the big obstacles that we had. It was glad to see Ms. Cortez, that was Abigail, Ms. Abigail do a presentation, a first, a presentation that we had not seen in a year, okay, if you think about that. And so tells us that we, that we will make it. We are close to opening, not because we want to, but because our kids deserve it. Okay, our kids deserve for us to work hard so they can have the education that they deserve. And I would like to thank everybody for making this happen. We have sports going on already. We have, I went to Blanche Charles Elementary last week, or no, I should say this week. And I toured the campus with, with the principal, I saw the. and I toured the campus with, uh, with the principal, I saw the classrooms, everything is in place. So, uh, we're gonna be doing more, more, uh, school walkthroughs. It's not an inspection, inspection, but rather a way for the principals and administration to let us know what is it that they're going to be doing once we open up. So, uh, I welcome everybody, uh, for their comments and concerns, doubts, or just, uh, to have their input on what is it that we are planning on doing in the next couple of months. Um, I would also like to thank, uh, the cafeteria workers, food services. I went, uh, to Cesar Chavez the other day, and immediately, masks, safe distancing, how many, how many lunches do you need, what's the name of your student? They don't, uh, uh, they don't, they don't wait for me to ask, uh, who, what, when, when. So, congratulations to everybody for doing a great job, and, uh, hopefully, uh, we will be back to quote-unquote "normal." Thank you. No, I just went to visit people. No, 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 I just went to visit, I just went to visit people. Oh, no, 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 I just, uh, full disclosure, I went to visit people to make sure that they had what they need, and, uh, yes, uh, the feedback that I received from them is they have what they need. Principal, the principal is very supportive of what they need. District office has provided, has, has provided everything that they need in order to feel safe when they, uh, when they're doing their jobs. So, no, I wasn't, I wasn't eating lunches. I had already my, my lunch in the morning, my breakfast, for the record, thank you. So, thank you, and let's continue with our meeting.
L, discussion possible action items. T one, COVID-nineteen safe, uh, up- the, update on safe return to in-person instruction, Mr. Gonzalez?
All right, well, good evening, trustees and community. Good, uh, we have a presentation, and here it comes, so. All right, so we'd like to give an update to the board on the COVID-nineteen, uh, reopening twenty, or twenty-two thousand twenty-one. We gave a presentation to the board, if you recall, at, uh, our special board meeting on February the twenty-fifth, which was two weeks ago. So, we want to touch up on some new updates that have come our way, and in regards to what we're looking at as far as recommendations to the board for reopening. And at this point, they are recommendations, and the board will, uh, have that final, uh, directive. So, if we can switch the slide to the next page. Now, we're looking at giving the board an update on a few things. On the Imperial County Tier Assignment and Metrics. So, uh, as far as approaching the red tier, we want to give an update on that. SB eighty-six legislation, that was, uh, approved on March the fifth. Uh, what does it mean in regards to the incentive funding, the new requirements and non-re requirements? Talk about our CUSD Safety Overview, some updates on that. Vaccination update, checklist for implementation and site safety plans, site videos and communication, teaching and learning, uh, parent surveys, update on that, and then instructional hybrid models, and of course, options in regards to, uh, reopening. So, next slide, please. So, this is a great slide, and we have not seen this, uh, since the pandemic started back in March of twenty-twenty. Um, this is great news for our community. Uh, we, uh, moved into the red tier, which provides some, uh, flexibility. There's still guidelines that we do have to follow. However, this is a great accomplishment, and, uh, this is wonderful, again, because it just allows us to start moving, hopefully, to those least restrictive tiers. So, we're in the red tier now, hopefully, we can make it to the, uh, orange, and then finally to the, to the yellow tier. So, just wanted to share with the board that we were purple, still two weeks ago. Now, we have entered into the red tier. Next slide. So, we, we shared this slide last time, and we talked about the reopening guidelines. And so, w- we talked about what we follow, and in this case, we are continuing to follow the reopening in-person instruction framework and the public health guidance for K- twelve schools in California. So, we were in the purple, now we've moved to the red. So, some of the requirements in regards to the, the school safety plans that we talked last time, um, first, it was a requirement for them to be approved in the purple, not whether we're starting to move or that we've moved into the red. Those no longer have to be approved, but we still have to post them, which we do have the plan as we shared with the board at our last special board meeting. So, in regards to the guidelines, we still have to follow guidelines that are part of the California, uh, Public Health Department. Next slide. So, this is some updates regarding, it was a proposal when it came to the SB eighty-six last time. Now, it's been actually signed into law. Uh, and so, what are some of the updates? So, we talked about safety plan. So, when it comes to the safety plans, those have to be posted. Uh, the difference is that when we enter into the red, orange, or the yellow, we no longer have to have those approved by the state or by the local, uh, county health department. Uh, the other areas, testing cadences, since we are in the red, uh, there is no requirement in regards to testing, uh, as well. So, that has been a change. In regards to instruction, it would need to start by April first in order to get the full incentive regarding funding. And then after that is a one percent penalty, which we'll get a little bit more into detail in regards to what that means. And then we have until May the fifteenth to reopen and qualify for this funding. Uh, MOU collective bargaining, uh, it was there the last time, however, after SB eighty-six was approved, that section, uh, was removed, uh, by the legislation. And then in regards to vaccines, there was unclear language on that one the last time that we, uh, presented, because it was a proposal. Now, with the, uh, legislation being law, uh, it is not required for reopening. And I've highlighted a bottom part that says, "The section shall not be construed as inferring that vaccines of school staff or pupils is a prerequisite for providing in-person instruction," and that is straight out of the SB eighty-six, the law. All righty, next slide. So, this slide talks about the, uh, actual funding. So, there's, there's two types of funding that was approved by SB eighty-six. One is the in-person instruction, and basically that is saying is that, uh, open by April first, you get full funding. After that, you lose one percent. So, what is it that we need to open with in order to qualify for this funding? So, we need to have all of our elementary grades and one grade in middle or high school, in addition to the, uh, all of the above. Um, what is the total amount that CUSD qualifies for? Is three million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight. So, that is the grant, uh, for in-person that we qualify for. Now, there's also another grant as part of SB eighty-six, and this is the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. So, this grant is to provide supplemental instruction to support, uh, social and emotional well-being, uh, and meals to, uh, specified pupil groups, and then fifteen percent may be used for distant learning or preparing to reopen. Now, for this, uh, amount, uh, the district CUSD qualifies for seven million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty. This amount, uh, there is no, uh, loss in the sense that we have to bring students back. Uh, this amount is a guaranteed. What we do have to provide by June first of twenty-twenty-one, uh, and adopted by the board, is how are we going to spend this money? So, again, two pots of money. The one pot of money is for the in-person instruction incentive, uh, three million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then the Expanded Learning Opportunities, and that one is pretty much a guarantee. We just have to, uh, submit a plan to the state. All righty. Next slide. So, this is a, a breakdown. So, we have the two grants, the Learning Opportunity Grant, which is, uh, about seven-point-eight million, and then the In-Person Instruction Grant, about three-point-three million. So, in order to qualify for full funding for the In-Person Instruction Grant of the three million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight, we would need to open by April first. In regards to the Learning Opportunity Grant, about seven, little over seven-point-eight million, uh, that one, there is no impact, we would just need to provide the plan by June first. So, what is the one percent loss of funding, uh, mean? So, for every day that we open after the first, uh, in our case, it does not apply for non-instructional days. So, that would be the three-point-three million. So, what does that equal to per day? That equals to about thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And again, this does not apply for non-instructional days, would, which would be spring break. And, uh, spring break would be from April the first to, through April the eleventh. So, there is no loss of funding, uh, during that time. And so, right next to that, there's, uh, some information highlighted. This is coming directly from the SB eighty-six language. Uh, one percent for each day of instruction provided for in-school calendar. So, what that basically means is that if it's a non-instructional day, there's no loss. Then, at the bottom, left-hand corner, there's a loss of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety cents per week, um, if we open after May, uh, April the twelfth. So, what we want to put in perspective is because we're in spring break, from the first of April to the eleventh, there is no loss of funding there. Um, and then what would we need to open? All of TK through sixth grade and one secondary, which would be seventh through, one of the seventh through twelfth grades, uh, in order to be considered fully open. So, it could be a seventh grade, it could be an eighth, it could be a ninth, it could be a tenth, an eleventh, or a twelfth. It only has to be one of those, okay? Any questions so far? All right. So, moving on, gonna give the board an update in regards to vaccine, and we'll have, uh, Dr. Thurman. Dr. Thurman, uh, there's a microphone right there.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, good evening, just to provide an update, we've had, um, five different allocations of vaccines, starting with twenty-six vaccines for, um, the three days, February twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. Then, we had ninety-one vaccines allocated for February twenty-sixth. We had eighty-nine vaccines allocated for March fifth, and then a hundred and ninety-two vaccines for tomorrow, March twelfth. So, in each case, we provided at least ten percent, uh, of a waiting list. On March fifth, the county asked for a twenty percent waiting list, and almost, um, all of these extra waiting lists people were able to get, um, vaccinated as well. We're really, uh, proud of our educational community, because they've been pursuing vaccinations outside of this program. Um, each time that we've sent out invitations for these, um, the numbers of people that, um, had already, have already had a vaccine were increasing each time, which is a good thing, because that didn't mean we lost vaccinations, it means we were to, able to move on to other people and bring them in. So, each time that we were given, uh, vaccinations, we did use every single one of them. Uh, we just went into the waiting list each time. Yesterday, we were allocated three hundred and forty-one vaccination codes, which is a new, um, plan, a new strategy that's, uh, that's transitioning into the My Turn Program. Um, the county was very honest, saying this is the first time we're transitioning, so to be patient. Uh, we tested it, and it was a little bit, uh, challenging to get, uh, and, to find appointments, but, um, it can be done. Uh, but it is gonna take patience on all of our parts. So, today, as we were calculating which staff across the board needed to be, um, vaccinated, with our percentages of people that are getting, uh, vaccines on their own significantly increasing, we did a final, um, email out to all CUSD staff, um, asking them to respond to us if they have not had the vaccine yet. So, I think within about fifteen minutes, we had thirteen people already that responded immediately. Um, I'm anxious to see what it is later tonight and, and of course, in the morning. But we will be, um, taking the three hundred and forty-one of those and providing a code by which they will go into the My Turn, um, website and put that code, and hopefully have an appointment very soon, um, for their vaccinations. So, we think that we will be very close to having offered a vaccination to all staff. Now, um, this three hundred and forty-one with C O's, CUSD all, um, email today, we've not reached out to our subs for classified or certificated, and those will be included eventually. So, um, in the next round of, of, um, vaccination, we'll also include board members and personnel commission board members. So, that's part of the priority one D that you see here. Uh, but we're very excited that this has progressed so fast, from February twenty-second through twenty-fourth, getting twenty-six vaccines to less than a month later, and we're getting a total of, uh, three hundred and forty-one that we just received yesterday, for a total of over sp- about seven hundred and forty vaccinations. Um, and that, combined with what people have been doing on their own, um, we feel is really moving us along towards total, um, inoculation in our, in our, um, educational community. So, questions on the vaccinations?
No.
All right. Moving on to the next slide here, these are, uh, we've presented these the last couple of board meetings. These are the, the components of our reopening plan. Um, many of these are in our, our COVID Protection Program Plan that we've presented, and we've taken that plan and really broken it down into a reopening plan for each site, so that the, each of these areas are customized, um, per, uh, each of our school sites, um, each of our facilities regarding how students will be dropped off, how they will come onto campus, how they will leave campus, how they will transition, um, throughout the day. So, um, that, uh, bottom link there shows the official plan, we have gone through that, we did that in the last meeting. What I'd like to do is go, uh, we gotta, you can click on that there and see this. If you remember last time, we went through each of these areas, and, um, there are some areas for each site to plug in their information. This, these plans will be the individual plans that go out to families, that go out to our communities, so that parents at each site know exactly, um, what to do, and how the district plan is incorporated into each site's plan to keep our, our students and staff safe. So, very, uh, critical document here. Um, moving to the next slide, um, as a result of putting these plans together at all our campuses, um, site leaders have been, um, including the, they've been putting the text in that plan, but they've also been doing some videos. So, we looked at some of these last week, um, had a couple of challenges, I think we've got those worked out. So, I'd like to show number five here, the Mainz Elementary School video. If you can click on that, thank you. Turn the volume up. I don't know if they can hear it on, online or not. Can Eduardo get the volume up in here or no? Yeah. There we go. It looks like we may not have volume, but you can see some of the things that are in place here with the barriers before and the signage, all the different components that are helping to keep everybody safe. So, all sites are putting a plan like this together. We'll have their plans all, um, translated before they're sent out, and, um, will be a, um, real significant piece in helping our community understand what each site's doing before they send their students to, back to school. Questions on videos or on the, uh, reopening site plans? All right, uh, we move to the next.
All righty. Thank you, Dr. Thurman.
Yes.
So, moving on to the, um, teaching and learning. So, one of the things that we, we shared with the board the last time was the survey. So, uh, there's been more that have taken the survey, uh, so there's not much of a change in regards to what the comfort level is, uh, for both, uh, the Spanish and the English. The preferred, uh, attendance would be hybrid at twenty-five percent. Uh, and that's probably natural, just because it's, it's to begin. Uh, obviously, as conditions improve, which we're hoping that we continue to improve, then at that point, we would increase to the fifty percent model. But I think that, uh, once we do have students start going in and, uh, students and parents obviously feel more comfortable, then I think the, we'll see higher percentages from twenty-five to fifty percent model at that point. Alright, next slide. Last time that we, uh, had the special board meeting, we talked about the different hybrid schedules. And so, there are proposals for TK Kinder. There are also proposals that we have for the different grade levels. Uh, if you recall, Ms. Elisa Ramirez went over these, uh, different proposals with the board. So if you can maybe click on TKK, just to show the board the, the work that has been, uh, gone into, uh, you know, creating these, uh, hybrid models and how students would be coming in and leaving and the times that they would spend in the twenty-five percent. So this is the proposal for TK Kinder. And if we can move to the next one, which is, um, first through third grade. And so you can see that there is the first through thir- third grade twenty-five percent model. And then there's also, if you move down, there's then the fifty percent model. So in other words, how would that gradually change as conditions improve that we move from a twenty-five percent model to a fifty percent model? So if we can go back. And if we can go to the fourth through sixth hybrid model. And the fourth through sixth hybrid model also, um, shares exactly what the schedules would look like. And then if you scroll down, it also shows the fifty percent hybrid models that we would be implementing after that. Alright. And if we go to the seventh and twelfth, we also shared with the board the seventh through twelfth hybrid models, and then how those would be implemented at the seventh grade levels to the tw- uh, twelfth grade. Now, one of the things that, um, we are working on is, um, still working to finalize some of these with, uh, our teachers association. So, just wanna, you know, share that we've been doing, uh, a, a great job of, of meeting and looking at, you know, the, these instructional schedules. So, these are tentative, there could be some, uh, some changes to them, okay? And I do have Ms. Hurtado and Ms. Flores on the line in case the board has any questions on any of the, the hybrid models. Alrighty. So then, moving on. So, one of the things that we've been looking at is a proposed timeline. Uh, we've been looking at pre-K through six, how, how would that look like? And then the junior highs. One of the things that we've been looking at as far as proposing is scaffolding. And scaffolding, and the biggest reasons is, you know, the safety. Um, as we are coming back from not coming to school, almost in a whole year, right? Well, for the whole year, we do have some students that, uh, I'm sure that when it comes to the new procedures, it's gonna be new for them. And so, one of the, the proposals is to try to scaffold. And by trying to scaffold the schedules, what that does is it allows for a group of students to come in, show them what the procedures are, make sure also that the staff gets used to those procedures, and then safely bring in the next group, and then the following group. So what we're proposing, for example, for first, uh, for the first week, uh, is to bring in first and second. Uh, the second week TK Kinder through third grade. And then for week three, fourth, fifth, and sixth. And then for the junior high schools, uh, week one would be eighth grade. Uh, and then for, um, the third week, then bring seventh grade. And the reason for that is because the junior high school, the numbers are a lot larger than, uh, than the elementaries would be. So, if you go to the next slide, we have an actual calendar just for the purpose of being visual, to try to show the board then what would be those grade levels that would be, uh, coming back. So for the first week after spring break, which would be April the twelfth, uh, we are recommending to the board to bring back first, second, and preschool. Then the following week, which would be the week of the nineteenth, bring TK Kinder and third. And then the week of the twenty-sixth, bring back fourth, fifth, and sixth. So, you know, one of the things that we did also is have input in regards to, um, scaffolding. This was a recommendation also from administrators, as opposed to having all of them come, um, at once. Now, when it comes to the first, second, and, um, uh, second graders, they've been in school before, right? The TK Kinder, those are students that have not been in school. And so, well, the proposal was try to bring the first, second, uh, first. Reason for that is, once the administrators go through a week of bringing those students in, um, then it would be easier then to focus on the TK and Kinder after that. Because the TK and Kinder is a group of students that has not, uh, been to any of our campuses before. This is the first time that they'll ever be stepping on one of our campuses. So, everything is new to them. And then, when it comes to the junior high, uh, the recommendation is for eighth grade to bring them the week of the twelfth. And then, uh, seventh grade, bring them in the week of the twenty-sixth. So, if you recall the, uh, the grant that we discussed, the in-person grant, in that in-person grant, um, when we look at loss of funding, uh, it would actually be minimal with the proposal that we have here, uh, to the board. And let me explain why. Um, I shared with the board that for every week of, uh, that we, uh, don't come in, that we're losing, uh, about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, right? And so, if we, by the third week, have all of the students in TK, all the way to sixth grade, and the eighth grade in, then we've lost two weeks. So two weeks, uh, comes up to about three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So three hundred and thirty-seven thousand out of three million and three hundred and seventy-five is not a lot of money in the big picture, when we're also have the seven point eight million that we're getting, uh, by the state. So, the reason that we're proposing, uh, this schedule, uh, is for safety. Um, in regards to the funding, i- it's great that we have funding, um, but also the funding, um, is a small amount, uh, that we would be losing. But I think by going this route, we would be able to, um, safely start bringing back, uh, our students. And again, we have to look that this is, um, the first time that they're coming, uh, back on campus. Um, alright, next slide. So this is proposed timeline, and this, now we're looking at ninth through twelfth grade, and also we're looking at Aurora. So what we're proposing is for the ninth and tw- and twelfth grade to come in week two, eleventh grade come in week three, and then tenth grade come in week four. And then pending reopening date, that would be, uh, obviously, the direction that we get with the board, then obvi- we would plug the dates in there. And then for Aurora, week one would be twelfth grade, uh, week two, we would be looking at eleventh grade. And then for week three, we would be looking at ninth and tenth grade. So if we look at the calendar to try to get a, a better visual, if you can change the slide to the next one, please? Thank you very much. So we would be looking at, uh, ninth through twelfth grade, uh, coming in on the second week. Third week would be eleventh, and then tenth grade would be, um, the third, uh, basically, the, the fourth week. And then for Aurora, we would bring in twelfth grade on the twelfth, eleventh, uh, grade on the nineteenth, and then ninth and twelfth grade on the, uh, twenty-sixth. And again, when it comes to the secondary level, our secondary, uh, schools are, are large. And so we're trying to make sure that we scaffold it, uh, trying to start off with a junior high and all the elementaries, and also to make, uh, everybody available to the needs of all the school sites. If we bring all the students back at once, um, we just wanna make sure that we have all the support available and necessary to, to support our, our sites. Alright, next slide. So, CUSD school reopening recommendations, we, we've touched upon this slide the last time. So there's the three different options that we, uh, have to report to the state. We doing, uh, in-person or no in-person instruction? In-person instruction, number two. Number three, are we doing in-person instruction? And is it being provided only part-time hybrid model, including whether provided for all grade level, levels served by the LEA? Um, and then the fourth, uh, in-person instruction provided full-time. So, in regards to the status for the first option, in-person instruction, so we're currently providing, uh, instruction with, uh, distance learning, which I think, um, has been going very smoothly and very well in our district. For, so, next steps as far as that, that's in place. In regards to option number two, the in-person instruction and services, so what are we currently providing? So assessments, sports, uh, we're continuing with the sports, and it's only increasing, as I shared with you earlier in my report. And also, targeting, uh, targeted intervention. And those would be more the, the smaller cohorts. So, we're at number three, the in-person instruction and next steps. So we're in the red tier. So we're allowed to reopen. One of the models that we're looking at is the twenty-five percent. Currently working on finalizing the hybrid models with ACT. Parent choice is very important. Our parents would have the choice of in-person or distance learning. So, the recommendations to reopen begin at the twenty-five percent model, as through the surveys has been the, the choice, uh, that most of the parents have, uh, requested at this point. And to open, starting on April the twelfth, that would be right after spring break. There's no classes from the first all the way to the eleventh. So basically, coming back from the spring break, that would be the, um, the first day that we would start phasing in our, our reopening. So we're continuing to build on the positive momentum. Our numbers are down, key is safety. And that's the purpose for the, for the scaffolding that we are recommending to the board. We'll continue to implement the California Department of Public Health and County Safety requirements as we need to. Fast-tracking our employee access to vaccines, as Dr. Thurman, uh, uh, mentioned in his part of the presentation. And again, the in-person instruction, phasing it in, um, and making sure that safety is always a priority. The last option, the fourth one, that is the one that we're looking for, for the next school year, where we can really, hopefully, be back fully to normal, and we can have full instruction in our students back, uh, on campus, the way we're used to normally seeing them. Questions?
Thank you for the presentation, it's a good presentation. And I support the proposed timeline that you've made, uh, starting April twelve with scaffolding, um, with the schedule that you proposed. So I support that.
I'm also in agreement with that, uh, good presentation. I'm also in agreement with the April twelfth, uh, opening date.
Great presentation. It, it gives us a visual as, um, board members, um, teachers, classifieds, and parents. Um, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos, for this presentation. I, I think that, uh, this board is committed to, like I said before, to the safety and, and the health and the welfare of our students and our staff. Uh, the money, money comes and goes, okay? Money can be replaced. Uh, our students, our personnel cannot be replaced, so the safety comes in first. We've seen our numbers, the numbers of, uh, of, of the, uh, of people infected in the county go down drastically. Uh, at some point, again, at some point, we will have to go back and, and, quote-unquote, uh, start the new normal. I don't wanna be, I don't want this district to be the first one, I don't wanna be the guinea pigs to, uh, uh, on this, uh, new normal. However, uh, for what the numbers are telling us, uh, I believe it will be safe for us to start. And the only thing that I want is that before we, uh, start getting our kids back in, in the classrooms and our students, uh, and our personnel back in the classrooms and the schools, that you have a plan A, B, C, and D, in case that something happens. Okay? Everything needs to be, you have to have a plan for the plan, they will fail the plan. Okay? Everything, you need to have thought of everything that could go wrong, because if there's anything that is gonna go wrong, it will go wrong. So, it needs to be done that way.
Thank you, Mr. Calderon.
But, uh, I, I agree with this. I agree with this, uh, that, uh, we need to start, uh, we need to start, uh, uh, providing our students with, uh, with the education that they, that they deserve. However, safety first.
Absolutely, Mr. Calderon, and, and that's what we continue to work on. And we, we hope that the numbers only continue to get better, but the, the reality is that the numbers could at some point go in a different direction as well. So, so we, we're very realistic of, of that possibility. And obviously, that is something that we would keep the board abreast and the community as well. But if everything continues to move well, the way we're hoping, uh, then this is definitely the tra- trajectory that we wanna follow. So, with that, if I can have the board take action on the start date and the proposals, as far as the, the scaffolding, that would be.
Carlos, I'll, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Well, before, before, with the motion, I, I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Gonzalez, if the schools are ready. And then when I'm asking if they're ready, I'm asking you from the first aid kits to the temperature reading machines, all the logistics that it requires, that the plan that we have, um, if all the, um, equipment, uh, masks, uh, PPE kids are at the school sites and so forth, that's what I'd like to see. If that is already at the sites and ready to go.
Absolutely, it is, uh, Mr. Calderon. And if the board would like to take a tour of our PPE equipment and, and show you all the storage, where it's at as well, where it's readily available to our sites. Uh, the administrators continuously, uh, in their walkthroughs, observations. Uh, as we had mentioned, we do have the district administrators that are partnered with a site administrator. They walk through the site, and anything that they see that there's a potential need, uh, they'll come and request it. And they'll say, "Look, is this something that we can get support on and, and, uh, purchase?" Absolutely. So, we're very supportive of whatever the needs are. But in regards to PPE and, you know, everything that we know that we need to have, we've been working to make sure that our, our sites have it readily available.
I, I second the motion.
So there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Alvarado. There's a second, uh, by Mr. Romero. If no more questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. And I would like to invite, just like Ms. Magallanes said, I would like to invite this board to get in touch with Mr. Gonzalez as soon as possible to schedule a, uh, one of those, uh, one of those visitations to, uh, to our schools. Now, it's not an inspection. It's not an inspection, but rather a visitation to our schools, uh, so we, as board members, can in turn tell the people in Callexico that the schools are ready, not because they told us, but because we went and saw that the schools were ready.
And Mr. Board President, real quick, I know we're going off a little bit. Um, with that said, could we go ahead and see if we could go ahead and open our next meetings, you know, with the sa- with the guidelines from the county to the public?
Yes. Well, I, I had already talked to Mr. Gonzalez about that, and we'll be talking, uh, we'll be talking the, uh, the venue, the, the place to have the meeting in a sa- in a, uh, in a bigger venue, uh, for safer purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarado. So that was L one.
Excuse me, uh, President Ciro Calderon. So the motion is to move forward with the reopening plan.
Yes.
And for April twelfth.
As presented by Mr. Gonzalez, yes.
Thank you.
L two, dual-dimensional parking lot addition and presentation, Mr. Vega. Okay. How long is this? Is, is it long?
I can make it quick.
Okay, make it quick, please.
Thank you.
Yeah? Just about what I thought. Yeah?
We, we have Mr. Sanders on. Mr. Sanders is free to unmute your microphone.
Alrighty, uh, good evening again, board members. Um, I have, um, by the, you know, request of the board, I have prepared a- I have prepared a proposed, so the, a new, newly proposed, uh, student loading and unloading zone at dual elementary. And, um, I worked with our architect Jimmy Sanders to put together this schematic design for your review and, and guidance as to whether or not this is something that you will consider and approve, so. Is Jimmy on?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, Jimmy, thank you, alright, so. Oh, Eduardo, can you go to the next, uh, slide, please, awesome. Alright, so again, I asked Jimmy Sanders, obviously, to help me put together this schematic design. Because it's, it's not an easy task to add a new parking lot at an existing school site. It is a very complex and challenging, uh, project that requires an architect, that requires to be engineered. And that requires DSA approval and, you know, the entire construction, uh, process, uh, comes into place. So Jimmy, uh, you wanna talk about the proposed work area and, and what is that we put together for the board to consider?
Yes, okay, so, uh, we, uh, looked at the existing, uh, dual elementary site and, uh, reviewed the best location, uh, for a new, uh, student loading and unloading zone and, uh, a parking lot. And so we're proposing to locate this new, uh, facility in the southeast corner of the, uh, school campus. So, uh, this first slide shows the entire, uh, dual elementary campus and the proposed location on the, the campus.
Next slide, yeah.
So the, uh, the scope of work for this project includes a, uh, new student loading and unloading zone and a new parking lot. As Mr. Vega mentioned, uh, we would obtain DSA approval. Uh, there are a total of seventeen new, new parking spaces and two new ADA parking spaces. The project also includes landscaping and, uh, marrying the existing landscaping into the new landscaping. A new student entrance gate, uh, new site fencing to separate the, the student or the, the loading and unloading zones from the student playground area. There's a new pedestrian gate on dual and two new, uh, rolling vehicular gates on dual. So the project also include two new, two new driveways off of, uh, dual avenue. And then we have, uh, alternate ad for, uh, parking lot lighting and surveillance cameras also included in the project. So this, uh, this next slide is a rendering of what that new facility would look like. So the, the vehicles would come in off of dual, they would immediately, uh, enter into a long driveway there, uh, heading, uh, west. And there would be a, uh, student loading and unloading, uh, area in that location. And then the, the vehicles could circle on around and on their way, uh, heading east, that, that's where they could access the two ADA parking spaces. And also the, the seventeen, uh, new parking space.
And I'll talk about this budget piece, so. You know, this is a concept, this is the design that we put together, you know, based upon the request of the board. Total estimated cost, you're looking at about eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars without the alternate. If you wanna add the alternate of lighting and video surveillance, then, you know, you're looking at about nine hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, this is not an item that was budgeted in the, in the current year. And because it's not, it's new construction, this does, this doesn't fall under the routine restricted maintenance account. So it will have to come out of the general fund. So, and, you know, as you can see, there's a lot of planning, we have to get, you know, through the DSA approval, we have to do some, you know, testing. We have to do our due diligence, you know, before we can actually begin construction. But overall, that's what you're looking at, just about nine hundred thousand dollars, it could be less depending on, you know, on the bids. Once we get DSA approval plans, we go out and bid, and then, you know, we will get a more accurate number at that point. But that's what you're looking at right now. So I'll open it up for questions, comments.
Sure, thank you so much, Mr. Sanders, thank you as well. Um, the timeframe, if it does get approved or, what's the, what's the timeframe we're looking at?
So, can we go to the next slide? There we go, so if you approve the project, uh, obviously, we have, we need about ninety days to put everything together. The engineering, the planning, so that we can get ready and submit to DSA for approval. DSA approval is about a hundred and twenty days. It could be less, but that's more or less the amount of time that they're taking based upon a project, you know, of this size. Uh, bidding process, after DSA approval, then we have to go out and bid, it's about thirty days, you know, to get everything, you know, bid and, you know, job, sidewalk throughs and all of that. Uh, then the construction of the actual parking lot is about a hundred and twenty days, from the time that we issued the notice to proceed.
Cesar, in regards to the bid, can we open the bid up for open public bid?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Open public bid, meaning that when they come in to place the bid, they do it here in front of us? That way there's no train in the building?
We can do it that way, if that's what the board chooses for us to do, yes.
Okay.
Cesar.
Yes, sir.
Is this, would this be considered new construction?
It is, this is new construction, yes.
So would, would we, would we, would it be eligible for any type of reimbursement?
No, this is not, you know, we're not replacing facilities, this is, we're adding a parking lot. Parking lots normally don't fall into a state reimbursement program.
Okay, yeah, and this is something that's been needed for that school for a long time.
Oh, no, yes.
Especially with all the traffic going through and stuff like that.
Yes, especially because it's on Encinas and, yes, I've been asking for this for a long time, so. Thank you, Cesar, thank you, Mr. Vega, for, for this, this plan, uh, well done. Any more, any more questions or comments? Yes or no?
I, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
You said it's coming out of the general fund?
Yes.
Then it would be probably a year or two?
So if you approve this project tonight, uh, you are looking at next year's budget, that's gonna impact next year's budget, yeah. There might be some fees that we have to pay this year, you know, to get the project going. The engineering, the architect, and some of the soft costs. But the actual, the hard costs, the actual construction of the project, it will impact next year's budget. So, you know, this is not something that we have added to this year's budget, nor have, unless you approve it, then we will definitely add it, uh, for next year as well. Twenty-one, twenty-two. Yes, so it's a general fund expenditure, so I just wanna make sure that the board understands that.
And the general fund balance was, uh, we're looking at what?
So right now, uh, when I present second interim, a little bit later tonight, you will see that right now we're looking at ending the year with about one point eight million on the positive.
Therefore.
For this year, therefore.
Right, so, but next year, so, look, one of the things that, and, and this is something that I need to talk to the board when I present the second interim, but. Look, the, the, the issues that we're dealing with right now, uh, Mr. Romero, is that, not issue, but it's a good thing and a bad thing at the same time. Because right now we are, the district and every other district in California has been assisted by one-time funding. One-time funding in the current year and one-time funding in the next year. So one-time funds, one of the things that one-time funds create is the illusion that we're not deficit spending. Because it's money that comes in unexpectedly for, that have strings attached, specific purposes. But when you put it on our ledgers, obviously it looks like we don't have a structural deficit, which we do. And I will get into more details, but, look, we are expecting to finish up the year on the positive this year. And also we're projecting a surplus on the following year as well.
But this will add to the structural deficit.
Well, it's a one-time expenditure, it will reduce our ending fund balance.
Exactly.
It's not a recurring expenditure, it's a one-time expenditure, so it will impact just, more than, more than likely it will impact next year's budget. Because this project, by the time we get it, uh, you know, out of DSA, it will be next year.
Now, currently, the, the, I know the kids are being dropped off on Encinas Avenue.
On Encinas Avenue, that is the current loading and unloading zone, yes.
Now, what is a major obstacle with continuing to use it then?
We haven't had any, that I know of, I haven't heard in concern, I don't know, Mr. Gonzalez, if we received any complaints or any issues. I think this is something that is more so, like I said, it was requested from the board to bring this as an, um, you know, an alternate choice to offer more, and, you know, adequate parking. And a better entrance, another entrance to the school.
But there haven't been any obstacle, major obstacles at this point in time?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I, I think the, the major concerns that, uh, had been brought up, um, was in regards to the parking. That there's not enough parking for staff, because the dual staff parking, if, if you recall, it, it's so small. That there's no way that all of the staff can park there, so a lot of the staff parks on the street, on the little street between dual school and, uh, Enrique Camarena Library.
Eighth Street, whatever.
Eighth Street, right, and so there was some dropping off that was taking place at, there. But one of the recommendations to provide a safer drop-off, um, was to relocate it somewhere else. The front of Encinas, as we all know, it's super busy because we have three schools there, right? We have dual, Callexico High School and CHS nine. So for those reasons, that was why it was brought by the trustees, um, as something to, to look into, so.
Again, a million dollars is a high price tag.
I met, I met with the parents of dual. And their parents, their main concern was the drop-off of Encinas. It's, uh, it's unsafe, knock on wood, nothing, nothing major has happened. However, um, it is the only school that doesn't have a dedicated drop-off, pickup and drop-off in all of our schools. Mainz has one, Blanchouse has one, Kennedy Gardens has one. But dual doesn't have one, so again, um, we spend money on everything else. I say that we do this for this school, and I say that, uh, that we offer the students a dual, the same safety, uh, uh, procedures that we, that we have offered to every other school in the district.
Yeah, that was something also that was brought up to me by some of the parents there from dual school also as well, that there is times where it's busy up in the front, Richard. And there you have some part, some people parking on, there's two lanes going through there, so you have, sometimes you have people parking on one of the lanes also as well to get their kids off. Nothing, you know, nothing has happened yet, but, you know, it's one of those things that I think it's, it's well overdue. Um, and it's something that the parents have asked, um, if it takes more parents to be, you know, to come in, to voice their concerns and stuff like that. And that's something that, you know, pretty sure that they're gonna come in and, and, and do that also as well. Um, but that's, you know, for schools, uh, for, uh, student safety, I, I think it's, you know, to me, it's a no-brainer. Uh, you know, I wanna go ahead and go with it, if I do have the support from the rest of the board, if not, then, you know, let me see if there's other ven, other venues that we could possibly use, you know, for student, uh, drop-off and pickup.
Yeah, I'll second that, um, I was a student at dual, and there's always has been a need for parking and for student drop-off. And thank God there hasn't been any accidents, but it's long overdue, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to approve these plans for L-two, dual elementary parking lot addition and presentation. I'll make the motion to approve this, is there a second?
I'll second.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, are we also approving the lighting and surveillance?
I think if you can include the other stuff, you might as well include the lighting and the surveillance.
Yeah, because, uh, again, that's the approximate, that's the approximate, but it might come, it might come down with the, with the bidding and the bidding process.
It might come up, it might, it might go up too. That's our bidding goes.
Yeah, already it's going to go up for next year, so.
But I mean, are we going with the, add alternative add lighting and video surveillance?
I agree, because it's in the back side of the, of the, of the school, and it's next to the community center.
Exactly.
Yeah, and then when we have, when, when we have, when we have parent nights and things like that. And, uh, our, our staff and parents need to park back there, so it needs to, they need, it needs to be, it needs to be added, so.
If you can do it, do it right.
Yeah, exactly, so I will make the motion to approve with the inclusion of the alternate, alternate ad for lighting and video surveillance.
I'll second.
There's a motion approved by Mr. Calderon, second by Mr. Alvarado. If no more comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Jimmy.
Motion passed, five-zero. L-three, Kennedy Gardens Elementary School, new playgrounds, I was waiting for Ms., uh, Ms. Ramirez, however, she's not here. So I would like for Ms. Ramirez, I wait from, I would like to wait for Ms. Ramirez to come and, and do that presentation. In the, uh, in the essence of time.
Absolutely, um, I think though there is an item though that is attached to this one, in an action item, uh, that we want to, uh, bring to the board, and it's part of an action item. Mr. Vega, I don't know if you wanna talk a little bit about this.
No, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, can, can I speak about it, so? So again, this is dual elementary, so, so.
No, this is Kennedy Gardens.
Oh, Kennedy Gardens, I'm sorry, Kennedy Gardens, so, so I'm sorry, I'm getting confused here, it's getting late. So KG, so we made an assessment of what type of playground structures are needed at KG. And, and obviously there's a huge need, you know, there is a huge need for kindergarten, for type of, uh, playground, and there's a huge need for the primary grades. We did an assessment with, you know, we met with a company that specializes on this, uh, you know, worked with legal to piggyback on a, on a, on an existing, uh, piggybackable bid for playground. And, you know, we put together a project that is about, for contemplating both playground structures and, you know, to meet the needs at KG. You're looking at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, and, and again, it's an action item later in the agenda, so. What I wanted to share with you is that, you know, in order for me to make that project happen in the current year, because the board said that you guys want me to address one project per year. You know, in order for me to do that, I need to get started right away, because construction of those two areas is about ninety to a hundred days. So in order for me to get this done before June thirtieth, I need to have approval tonight. Otherwise, this is gonna affect next year's budget, so might as well wait until next year. So just wanna, you know, share that with you, it is a general fund expenditure, because again, this is not a, uh, an existing facility that I have to renovate. You know, with routine restricted maintenance funds, this is a brand-new, brand-new playground, you know, for both the kinder and the primary grades at KG.
Cesar, real, real quick, uh, I think it's under item M-15, but on here it's Cesar Chavez.
Oh, that's, uh, that's another one.
That's another one?
That's another one.
But, um, Mr. Vega.
Yes.
Don't we have swings and slides there right now?
I don't.
Yes, we do, we do.
At KG, no, we don't have anything.
In the, in the kindergarten, and at Kennedy, uh, not Kennedy, kindergarten, we do have swings and slides. We do have them, so you would be replacing the old ones.
We will be replacing, yeah, so, and, and again, when we met with the principal, with, you know, with, with staff. You know, we made an assessment based upon what is it that they need, and obviously what they have right now, it doesn't meet the needs of, you know, their programs. So, you know, what I'm bringing forward to you is a design that does specifically that, that addresses their education specifications. And the current needs that they have for both grade levels. So do they have something right now, they probably, I don't recall, to be honest with you, I don't recall if, whether they have swings or not. But if they do, it's, you know, their recommendation, the principal's recommendation, Ms. Ramirez's recommendation is that if we're gonna do something, might as well do it right.
And, and if I can recall, I know Ms. Ramirez isn't here, she, she was the one that did the walkthrough and the assessment. I, I believe that for, uh, for Kennedy Gardens, the, the preschool program, they do have a beautiful, uh, you know, play area. But I don't believe that the kinder and TK area, that I remember in my walkthroughs, I don't remember seeing any equipment in, in that area. And I think that's what, the reason why of having Kennedy Gardens as the first school, because it has the most need of all the elementary schools.
Do you have, sorry, I interrupted, Mr. Gonzalez, do you have a plan of what you wanna install there?
We don't, I don't have a schematic design, but I do, uh, I did share with the principal what it would look like. I can send that, I, and I think I did send it to you on my Friday update, what the playgrounds would look like. I don't know if you received my Friday update. Like, I think it was last week, I did send you, forward you that information ahead of time, so that you can have time to kinda take a look at what it looks like. Because playground, it, you know, they, they can put it in different configurations, you know, depending on, you know, whether they want the swings or the slides, the shade structures and all of that, so. It's, it's a brand-new, they're brand-new, they're more than adequate, more than what they would need for years to come. And, but again, look, it's, it's a general fund expenditure that was not budgeted, that was not contemplated. And if it doesn't get approved tonight, with, you know, I respect what the board decides, uh, if you wanna bring it back in April, we can do that, but then do. Uh, if you wanna bring it back in April, we can do that, but then do know that I won't be able to complete that with this year's budget. It will have to be with twenty-one, twenty-two, if the board decides to follow through with that plan. But you're looking at, you, right now, you're looking at, at about, and it's, it's an action item, but it's, it's, it's in the mid-four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for both, and, uh, ten-year warranty. And again, uh, if I'm gonna do this, if the board approves this project, I wanna get it done right. And, and, and make sure that, you know, it's gonna be something that's gonna last for a year.
So, um, Mr. Vega, if I may, Mr. Calderon, I just got text from the principal. So, in the kinder TK, there's two swings, that's it. And the primary has two swings that are left, so, so that, those are the conditions, and that was from the principal.
In fact, in the kinder, that swing was, in the Williams tour or whatever, they deemed it unfit for, to be there, and it's still there.
We have very poor playground areas that we need to, you know, that's a fact. I mean, you, you said it, they're coming out in the Williams.
That's all they have.
But, you know, again, that's your business mind, you know, this does affect our bottom line. And, and, and that's what I'm trying to share with you, that I can do, if that's what you want me to do, I will do that. But it will again, impact my general fund, my ending fund balance.
Mr. Vega.
Yes.
I know there's another item on tonight's, uh, agenda, and that involves Cesar Chavez.
Mm-hmm.
So, that one will go also on this year's budget?
That one is routine restricted maintenance, because I'm renovating an existing facilities. And I do have money that I need to spend under, under the eighty-one.
What I'm asking is, I don't wanna double up.
No, sir. That is a routine, that, that Cesar Chavez project is a routine restricted maintenance, and I do have the money to complete that project with this year's routine restricted maintenance budget.
And the only reason is, I, I was asking to, to see if that one's gonna hinder the budget, but if it's not, then I'm, I'm willing to. They, they, they need it. I move to approve it.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Calderon, is there a second?
I second it.
There's a second by Ms. Magallanes. If no more questions or comments, all those in favor to, uh, approve the Kennedy Gardens Elementary School New Playgrounds. Say yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. L-four, HVAC services?
So, we brought this one, trustees, uh, this is HVAC services, um, so we had brought, uh, we had gone out to an RFP, if you recall. And, uh, the item was, uh, was denied, and that one had to do with, uh, being able to go out, go out and provide service to our air conditioners, also when it came to repair or, uh, replacement. Uh, there had been a, a concern shared in regard to the cost. Uh, I know that there was discussion at the time in regards to providing a potential ceiling, uh, a maximum that could be spent. Um, we don't have a contract right now with a, an AC company. Uh, in regards to the heat, it's going to be in the eighties as of next week, and with the reopening around the corner, we just want to be able to have the flexibility, uh, to be able to have, uh, an AC company to provide the service as far as the maintenance, uh, but also, uh, in the event that we have an emergency and we need to replace an air conditioner unit, that we have the ability to do so. At the last board meeting, there was the AC company that had been recommended as far as the RFP, Mr. Vega.
Yeah, I think it was, uh, VIX, there was a, uh...
I have a question. If our students haven't been in the classrooms for a year, why would we need to replace AC units or do maintenance on those units?
It, it would only be in the event that there is a need for, Mr. Calderon. And the reason I say that is, as we get closer to the, the, the summer months, we all know it gets very, very hot. So, obviously, our staff would be the ones to provide the service, but if it comes down to, uh, a need, one of the things that we're doing right now is we're doing the social distancing. So, our classes are gonna be limited, and in regards to the access, it's not like we can put, like before, right, when things were normal, everybody in one, one place. So, what we're, what we're asking for is some, some direction, even some parameters, I know we had discussed it the last time, to try to, um, get a, a, a service agreement, which we had gone on to an RFP, but with the piece of, uh, repair or, um, replacement if needed in the event that we have a situation that is an emergency. That's the, the piece that we're, that we're getting very concerned with, that if for whatever reason, we have our own folks tied up or they can't attend to it, we don't want days to go by, not that they can't do the work, but we don't want days to go by and we still can't replace, uh, an air conditioner.
Carlos, um, real quick, in regards to that, um, I've looked around, and I know other districts buy their own AC equipment, okay? Um, if we're gonna go out to get some type of contract with the AC company, AC service, I'm gonna be recommending that we do it in an open, public bid, where they come in and show us their bids, right then and there, okay? Um, another thing, make sure it's just an annual contract, alright? Um, on another note, that I wrote down also as well, make it a split contract, meaning that one company gets all the elementary schools, the second company gets junior high through the high school and Aurora. The reason for that, we could compare and contrast why, if both companies are pretty much the same, or what's going on with that, alright? That's in a nutshell. The other thing is, for the district, like I stated again, the, the district buy our own AC equipment, okay? And the contract to specifically include one-year service yearly, right? Labor to change air filters once or twice only, 'cause I bet you sometimes, when we got the services and stuff like that, they were just going out there, probably just washing it off, and that's it. Um, you know, uh, and then labor to replace the belts also as well. Make it specific. Um, and if there needs to be an AC that gets replaced, we have that AC here already. I know there's companies out there that'll come in and go ahead, and you guys could do purchase of it. I, I think El Central, uh, does that, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so that's one of those things, I think, that we need to, uh, follow up with also as well, just for the same, for the only reason, cost savings, that's it. Um, and also, I want a question, you know, what's our, our HVAC people doing also as well?
Well, first of all, thank you for those recommendations, Mr. Alvarado. Uh, I know, Mr. Vega, you have some more questions regarding that particular bid going out to?
Yeah, I think I understand what he's asking.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the idea of open bids, and I like the idea of making sure everybody gets a fair share of, of what we need, what we need done.
And, and the, the only reason what I'll do is, I'll, I'll email you with that, what I just got and stuff like that, what I broke down. Um, it, it makes sense, at the same time, like I stated, it's, it's, it's gonna be a cost savings for us also as well. If we make it specific to what they want, 'cause, you know, a, another thing is, I wanna see what, um, our warranty was on all the ACs that we replaced also as well. What's our yearly warranty? Do they have one year, two years, three years, four years, five years? That's another thing. I, but I think that's on another note, and you could send that over to, you know, to the board members, that way we could go ahead and see, you know, what, what's, what was that?
On the next board meeting, we'll be bringing out, all that information.
I have a question. I'm curious, Mr. Alvarado, how many agencies in the, how many school districts have open bids?
Have what?
How many school districts in the valley have open bids?
I didn't look into that, Richard.
I mean, I've, I've never heard of that, really, I mean.
Yeah, but I, I'm just saying, you know, because.
Really, that's, I've seen where bids go to the, um, district office, or the, or to the city clerk, if, if it's a city, and the bids are open there in front of the appropriate in, individuals. But for the bids to go to the governing board?
They open them up in front of us, Richard, in front of everybody, right here. When they come and, and, and bid, they, they present, and they bid.
But we have, in my, in our four years, you've been here.
Yeah, I've been here, that, and that's one of those things, I, I've just been researching it, Richard, I've just been doing some, like, stuff on it my own, and that's something that I think that makes sense.
Well, I don't support that, but that's my, but that's my opinion.
I like to, uh, comment on this. Obviously, I mean, I've, I've been very vocal on this item. Um, first of all, uh, at this point, I don't think, I, I'm with Mr. Calderon here, I don't think we need a company just yet. Um, they haven't been, kids haven't been going to school, so I'm sure they've had plenty of time to service. But yet, we're, we're yet to see a maintenance preventive plan from the district. We still don't know how many, uh, exact how many ACs we have. And obviously, whatever, uh, plan or maintenance plan they have is not working. So, someone needs to go back and, and look at it, because I know that each HVAC, well, at least Mr., um, De La Rosa, um, stated that these HVACs are assigned per, per site. And we all know that a lot of these air conditioners were changed, so there's a lot of schools with, uh, new ACs that don't require too much maintenance, whereas we have others that do require. So, maybe the way they take the calls, daily calls on the air conditioners might need to change. Instead of having their staff assigned to each site, actually just respond like you and I would call an HVAC, uh, company when our conditioner goes down. So, it probably needs a little, uh, logistics, but I'm sure you can work it out. Uh, Mr. De La Rosa also mentioned that in the past, they would reassign that classroom to another class until they were able to fix it. I think, uh, we need to go back, if we're spending a lot of money on playgrounds and everything, we need to start saving some money here. So, someone actually needs to set a plan. I don't think we need it, we have four HVAC staff that should be able to do the job.
Yes, um, excuse me, may I speak?
What's that?
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
Um, we've said before, we've been told before, we have four HVACs, but, um, people, but three are on workers' comp. So therefore, only one, correct me if I'm wrong, only one is, is working.
Well, that, that's another issue, but, um...
But therefore, we don't have four people on hand. And, and, you know, we gotta be prepared for an emergency, um, in case, we need to have a, a plan in place for maintenance in case something goes wrong, in case a system goes down.
Well, when I came here in two thousand fourteen, uh, Richard, we didn't have a company that was helping our staff. It was just the HVAC staff. The only reason that a company was brought in is because apparently there were some issues, some, someone or two of the HVACs had gotten hurt because they fell or something. So, just to be able to get that maintenance for that year, and it just continued to a point where we're at now. So, someone needs to survey this HVAC, uh, unit here and see, and give us recommendations. Because we don't know, I'm not gonna go and survey it myself, but it's been done before, and we haven't added any, any air conditioners or buildings with air conditioners. We have replaced them with new ones, so that tells me that the work is not there. But yeah, we don't have that list yet. I mean, there was three hundred ACs that were not, uh, noted on the list, so, until we see that list, I mean, we can assess the problem and be able to, uh, assess the issue of maintenance.
So, what I hear is that we need to, uh, that we, we do need, we do need maybe some services. However, we need a plan to minimize the use of outside companies to come and, and do the job that our own HVAC people can do. So, I mean, I hea- I hear, I hear both, right, that, uh, we, we may need those services, however, we need to minimize the use of those services and let our, our own people do the job. That's also what I hear. Also, when I came here in two thousand and twelve, we did not have, uh, 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 we did not contract with people outside our district, so.
I have a recommendation. So, I was researching, um, preventive, uh, maintenance softwares. There's five that I liked, which is Fix, Hippo, Limbo, Maintenance Connection, and Do Solutions. So, these would help, um, workflow, um, standardization and increase productivity, improve safety, faster troubleshooting, and better maintenance, maintenance planning. So, there's softwares where the people who are with MNO can have an, an inventory system where they can know exactly what date, what month, they can give service, so we can go ahead and plan ahead and know how much money we're gonna be spending within six months and a year, or at least something, a timeline. So, there's several softwares we can go ahead and research.
Why don't you send that to?
I think, I think the last one, you said, Dude, School Dude?
Do, uh, yeah, Do Solution is for.
I think we hear, we, that's the one that we, we currently have.
Yeah. Do Solutions.
Yeah, we, 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 we have the School Dude.
Can you send, can you send those to, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, and he in turn can send it to the appropriate people?
Yeah.
And maybe for the, for the next board meeting, they can bring us a plan. And I'll be talking to Mr. Gonzalez about what is it that we need to, that we, we, we need to have for the next board meeting.
Yeah, and also a follow-up on this, these programs.
So, um, so, um, just to kinda continue.
Carlos, real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Could, uh, make a motion to extend the meeting till eleven o'clock, please?
Eleven, and that's it. There's a motion on the floor. There's a second by Mr. Calderon Junior. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes five-zero.
So, ju- just to try to get, you know, continue the discussion, I just want some clarity in regards to, uh, the direction. So, obviously, there's the, the maintenance component, right, we use the School Dude, um, which we had gone to bid out the last time, right, for the purpose of the maintenance service, uh, component. The, the piece that was the concern was the, the repair and the purchasing again. So, I, I think that, uh, Mr. Alvarado brings a, a good point in regards to, to, to even going out on a bid for that, to be a little bit more specific. Um, and again, I go back to the same thing, right, I'm just, I'm worried, that's all, in regards to if we have the need. I just don't wanna be in a position where we cannot replace an air conditioner for whatever reason. And again, not that our staff isn't going to work on doing it, but if we need to expedite it, or there's a, a need, uh, that's where we just wanna make sure that we have the resources to be able to support whatever comes up. So, look, if, if, if being more specific in regards to a bid is something that the board is interested, then that would be something that I think that we could look into, uh, as well. That way, it's more controlled and it's more, um, uh, there's parameters, you know, to the services that are going to be provided.
Okay. Can I, can I also piggyback on what you're saying? Um, you know, I, I, I talked to Kim Desert earlier about, you know, how she handled HVACs, you know, when she was, uh, Cent- El Centro, I think she was at El Centro. And, uh, over there, they have two HVAC technicians, Ernie and Jeremy, I think. Uh, one of them is a army reservist, and, uh, you know, they do ground-level HVAC installations. They, uh, what she said is that she, she never asked them to do any rooftop HVAC repairs, because obviously, that requires a crane. And, you know, you don't wanna have people, you know, in a school setting, uh, that is, someone that is not licensed or that is not trained how to maneuver cranes. Uh, but they also contracted out. They also contracted out when they were overwhelmed, because they were only two people, and sometimes, you know, this particular, particular individual that is in the, you know, National Guard or Army Reserve, um, you know, when he was absent, you know, obviously, there's a need for them to contract out. Uh, they also never worked, or when she was there, on the ductwork, because that's a, you know, sheet metal is a different layer of, you know, skill sets that we don't have the tools, nor the technology here to do it in, in, you know, internally. So, I'm just thinking that if we have to replace a unit ourselves, per se, well, I, you, you know, if it's a unit that is in a second-story building or a high, on a, on a roof, I don't wanna have my people, my HVAC technicians, you know, do that kind of, you know, unit replacement, because again, it requires just a different set of skills. Um, not from an HVAC perspective, but the placement of it and the ductwork and all of that, so, you know, it's, I, I, I think that's when a, a company that has all those tools and, and, and equipment, I think that's when it comes in handy. Um, the last time that we went out to bid, obviously, you know, they bid on the preventive maintenance, you know, by itself. That was one component, and I think VIX was the cheapest at eighty-seven thousand dollars per year, uh, in their bid. So, from a preventive maintenance standpoint, so some of the things that they look at is coils, you know, they're washed, you know, when they do the preventive maintenance, twice a year, not every month, but it's only twice a year, that's what they quoted us on. Not every month, but it's only twice a year, that's what they quoted us on. Uh, they check on the refrigerants levels, uh, they uh, they check the, you know, the fan belts, and they check the, you know, the electrical components, that, you know, the heat exchangers are checked too, and and they check for leaks, you know, just normal preventive maintenance. If there are maintenance that need to be, repairs that need to be made, then at that point, you know, they let us know. I'm with Mr. Gonzalez, you know, it's, you know, I'm not from the valley, but I have experienced the last two summers here, and oh, boy, you know, I I I can just think about the impact and the challenges that we would have if we have to replace an HVAC unit that is on top of a roof. How are we gonna go about that? We could probably call a crane company to come in and help, uh, but it's just the time that it will take us to get it replaced. Even if our own people does it, it's gonna be quite a bit of time. It's not gonna be something that will happen from one day to the other. So, you know, just to put that in perspective, I respect what the board's decision is. If you guys, if you want me to go out and bid, I I have never, I I'll be honest with you, in the, you know, twenty-plus years of, you know, career that I've had doing this, I have never had a a bid opening live at a board meeting. Uh, I have never had that. I I don't, I would rather check with legal first, if that is the proper setting to to do that. And if it is, if that's what the board desires, I I have no problem with that. But I'm with Mr. Gonzalez, it's just that if we reopen in in April, by the time I go out and bid and, you know, go through the process, I mean, I'm looking at May before I can bring something to you for consideration and approval. Uh, maybe, if you can just, for this time, only this time, if you wanna prove the preventive maintenance, just for, just give me one year, if if you can help me just one year, at least we can have that. And I can start working on the other component, like you said, if you wanna split the the repairs or however you want me to, you know, maneuver that, we just can't be without a company, you know, I'm just.
Mr. Vega? Let me answer to you, why does Boris is skeptical, why the majority of the board is skeptical about doing this? Because in the last three years, we spent, and when I say we, because we are the ones, we are the ones that are responsible for the finances of the of the district. Almost a million dollars was spent without none of us knowing that it was happening. So that's why this is happening right now, okay? So again, you have direction, okay? You have direction to to get done what we get, what we need to get done, and that's the end of it.
So what, I'm sorry, but what's the direction of?
No, my recommendation, uh, my recommendation is that we have a maintenance agreement in place. It's totally irresponsible to not have one.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying no.
That's my recommendation, that we go out for bid for some type of maintenance agreement.
I'm not saying no, but I'm saying for the next board meeting that, so they can bring something that we can agree on for the next board meeting, not not right now. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna agree to something that they want me to sign because they think that that is, that it's needed right now. So it is needed, yes, but we need to be careful where we approve. So if they bring something to our, to our liking, and now they know what we want, and they know what we don't want, then we'll approve it.
So Mr. um, Mr. Vega mentioned that we do have, we did go out to bid already, and VIX was the company that was recommended the last time, so.
Vi- VIX.
VIX, VIX AC, yeah.
Mr. Vega, what you just said, I agree a hundred and ten percent. Because you're right, I mean, there's gonna be times we're gonna need a crane and so forth, and I'd rather have some company come in and 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 do it, because you're putting our our staff in jeopardy and so forth, because we don't have the equipment. However, along with what you said, there needs to be a plan where there needs to be a check and balance. I mean, just because the the contractor says we gotta uh move, remove this this HVAC, someone needs, there has to be a couple of layers there to say, okay, well, yeah, we need to remove it, instead of just, oh, remove it and go ahead and remove it. That's why we got to a million dollars, because nobody was checking. And that's what we're asking. I mean, I know that you know, and and I know that Richard's right, that we need a contract, I agree. But we'd need a specific contract as to what they're gonna do, and when are they gonna do it, and how they're gonna do it. That's the problem. Yeah, that's, I mean, we will let, we let it run and run and run, and and it was, it was sad. Like Mr. Calderon was saying, we're responsible for public funding, and that's what we're trying to avoid here. I mean, you do need it, come up with a plan, bring bring it, bring it to us, and I'll have no problem approving it.
So so when you, when you say a plan, Mr. Calderon, are you referring to replace, and and this is clarification that we need? Are you referring to replace a unit every ten years, fifteen years, or you basically till the unit dies? I mean.
Well, I'm I'm not an expert in HVAC, but if you have a list and you have dates as how old these HVACs are, common sense, that we all lived in the valley, if you're lucky, you get six years, is a lot. So I know that, everybody knows it too.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, is just, we need a plan, how old these HVACs are, the maintenance that has been given, I mean, it's spelled out. I mean, I've offered to take you guys what we do in the prison, 'cause they do it. They, every day, they maintenance some machine or whatever, I mean HVAC, or heater, whatever it has to be, because there's a plan. Otherwise, come the summer, we would be in in terrible, I mean, these are brick walls that are holding these inmates. And I've been telling since two thousand fourteen, and that's how we're asking for a plan.
So.
So we don't allow another million point two to be spent, when we should be spending it on playgrounds and things that we should be spending on.
Right, and and I agree with a deferred maintenance plan. I think that's that's a great idea in regards to replacement of every when, fifteen years, ten years, whatever that might be, right? But besides the maintenance plan, there is the component of an AC going down. So part of the the maintenance, the deferred maintenance is, right, we're replacing every ten year, ten years or whatever that may be. But I guess the other component of the concern is, well, well, even if we have a deferred maintenance plan, the VNC goes down, and for whatever reason, there's an emergency, you know, our A, our our employees can't get to it, we really need to have it replaced, that's the piece where I'm saying, where we need at least a company to.
And you're, Mr. Gonzalez, you're absolutely right, 'cause we've got freezers, we've got a lot of things that are going on, and we can't afford a freezer to break down in the, in, during the weekend, because everything will go, will spoil, I understand that. But these are, and and, I mean, and there'll be, if we have four, there's a possibility those four won't be available, I understand that too. But we need it in specific as to what you guys are gonna do, what this company's gonna do. That's what we're asking. I mean, you spell it out for them, when they're gonna respond and what what when it is that company's coming to do the, do whatever they're gonna do, I mean, surveys or whatever the case might be.
Carlos, do you remember the other board meeting when you gave us a COVID plan, A through Z? That's what we want, for maintenance and operations, with dealing with HVAC and AC units.
Right, and and I can bring you a plan, but in the end, what I'm asking for right now is the resource to make sure that I address some of those issues that are gonna be coming up.
Well, in in that plan, in that plan, you will, you will talk about what you're going to do in those situations.
Okay, well, and 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 we can work on it. Again, my only concern is that this is March, April is right around the corner. By the time we have the next board meeting, we're already seeing temperatures going up, and we're talking about reopening, and we don't have a company. And so we'll work on the plan, however, I just wanna make it clear that we we we're, like I mentioned, right? We're we're concerned, we're worried uh in regards to the change in temperature. We're all here from the valley, and we know exactly how things are gonna go. And so I just wanna make sure that um, that um, we get direction from the board on this one.
So. I don't know, did you?
I support that we need to have a maintenance plan in place, like that, the the VIX uh air conditioning.
Well, and and that's actually still open, so that could be something that the board can move forward with.
We need, we, it's totally irresponsible to not have one in place, totally irresponsible. Especially with our weather. So I move with it, we accept, if if it's, if it's appropriate to accept VIX bid.
I believe it is, Mr. Vega.
Eighty, uh, Big Four's eighty-seven, let me make copy so I can share with you where the last bid came out.
HVAC services, I mean, are we talking up, is that on the agenda? I mean, because it just says HVAC services, it doesn't talk about anything about approving or disapproving a cer- a certain company. So how are we gonna prove something that we don't have anything here? We table that, we table, we disapprove that, or we didn't approve that motion?
This is discuss, this is a discussion possible action, and it was, it's, it's a continuance from from the last time.
There's nothing on the, there's nothing on the agenda, it just says HVAC services, that's all it says. You are the one, you are the one that chastised me the other day for breaking protocol. Is that what you wanna do?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's, it's irresponsible to not do it.
We're not gonna break protocol. So if they want us to.
Discussion possible action, Lucio.
Huh?
It says possible action.
But there's nothing, there's nothing that says that what we need to approve, or what we, or what is it that we want to approve?
You mean it's not?
It's not, it's not here. Who made the motion?
I did.
To approve, but what is it that we want to approve?
To approve VIX contract for, the prior contract that was submitted in a month ago.
Thank you. Would it be acceptable for the board to consider just a cap, not to exceed amount on any? Obviously, you have a number for the preventive uh maintenance, a not to exceed amount, but what about a cap? Just a cap on emergency repairs or regular repairs, just a not to exceed amount, whatever it is?
I would say fifty thousand dollars.
Anything. And and all, and look, all I need, at least until I get this process, bring in our new executive director that can help me do the inventory, just gi- just give me one year. And I can work on the bid and come back with you with a plan, and, but I just need someone that can help me put that together. And if I can get an executive director coming up over the next month or so, then, you know, that person can help me do it.
Can you work with fifty thousand?
This is how I, and and maybe I'm off here, but I'm looking at this, I think we have to give these companies an opportunity to speak if they wanted to, correct? I mean, why or ask, you know, 'cause I see different in 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 um, like regular business hours, after-hours. So we need, I would say that we, if a company wanted to give their opinion or sell, you know, sell themselves to us, they would have to have an opportunity, correct? And they haven't been noticed or notified if we were to make a decision on this, that's what I'm saying.
Well, they submitted a bid, and the bid are valid for six months.
Yeah, you don't make presentations in bids.
Well, then, then um, if we're gonna put fifty thousand, someone said fifty, I support Richard.
Okay.
Ms. Baganyana said fifty.
Yeah, well, I mean, she said fifty, but you said big, so let's do it.
Yeah, I support that.
So.
And and then if I may, Mr. Vega, you know, and and that's, and that's, that's fine, right? At least we have something, and if there is a a need for a change or more, we can come back to the board and request it at that point.
Okay, so to to get clarification, so VIX would be the company for the eighty-seven thousand preventive maintenance for one year, twice a year, or or no?
No, we said, we we said fifty.
No, fifty thousand is, if something breaks down, the maximum amount that would be spent.
For replacement.
Per year.
No, 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 no. That's too much, Richard, I thought it was for the whole, the call, no.
Well, eighty-seven thousand is a bid. But if something breaks down, the max would be fifty thousand dollars.
Per unit?
No.
No.
Per, 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 a timeframe, a year?
Fifty for why, the whole year?
Total.
Whatever cap you wanna give me, you know, I promise you, I will not exceed the cap.
So let, let's just say um, we are six months in the school year, and the cap is fifty thousand dollars. That's when they'll bring it up to the board. Hey, we just spent, or we're gonna spend, we're almost there at fifty thousand, so they can bring it up to the board.
Correct, if we reach that amount, then we'll come back to the board.
And that includes, so so the preventive maintenance is separate?
Yes.
The the emergency repairs and the repairs?
Amy says no, we cannot do it, no. No, because it's not agendized.
So let's move forward.
So, uh, I just, so the lawyer says that it, that uh, that it's not, lawyer states that it's not, is not part of the uh agenda, so even though it is is to talk about and take action, but there's, the contract is not there, so she's not comfortable with us approving it at this time.
So we're, we're, not necessarily the approval, but the direction, so that way we can bring back the item, even if it's at the next board meeting.
Oh, I am a hundred percent, no, it, that's what I've been saying, bring it back for the next board meeting, and maybe bring a plan, and you can bring this, I didn't say do not bring this back. I just said, not right now. Or we can bring it back for the special board meeting on the fourteenth.
I think that would be a great idea.
We should move it to the next board meeting and go ahead and move to the next item.
Yes, so, so L four.
So we're gonna table this for for next?
Well, not table, because it's just, it was for discussion, possible action, but there's nothing.
So, all right.
So, okay, so L four, it's stays as is. M, action items conservation and action approval of the following items. M one, fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, financial report and audit certification presentation.
Just before we go any further, that we explain to the public that what we did with L four, did you explain?
Well, I just said, I said, but because there's nothing, there there's no, there is no, there's no uh contract, there's nothing for the public to see.
All right, board, so, as you know, every year, we go through this process, this is the, the final. All right. So this is the final audit report for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So one of the things that I like to do is to have, one thing is for you guys to, board, to hear from me, saying how well we did, and another thing is, when the auditor that comes in and checks our numbers, checks everything that we do, to make sure that we've followed the law and that we do everything, you know, by the book, it's a different thing when they present it to you and they tell you the, you know, whatever the results are themselves. So uh, we invited the auditor, uh, I don't know if he's there, do we have any?
Yes, we have, you have Mr. Mike Mears here, thank you very much for.
Thank you. Mr. Mears, can you hear us?
Yes, no, I can hear you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, sir, thank you so much for your patience, thank you so much for, you know, making time and present to the board. Uh, the final twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, final audit report, and, you know, I shared with the board that, you know, we did pretty, pretty well regardless, so.
You know, I can, I, what I can do is just give a, uh, I know it's late in uh in the evening, I'm not gonna go into uh big spiel here, but just bring up some highlights just to reassure everybody. Um, I apologize, for some reason, my webcam's not working, I I, at least you can hear me. Um, does everybody, uh, um, the governing board and management have a copy of the audit in front of them?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yes.
My name is Mike Mears, I'm with Wilkinson Hadley King, and I'm the audit manager responsible for the district audit for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And, um, I'd like to bring up just a couple of highlights to reassure the board on the status of the audit process. Um, on page, um, page one, there's the independent audits report that's on our letterhead. And I'm happy to say, uh, the district received, oh, there you go. Uh, the district received, uh, an unmodified opinion. And that is the best opinion that you can receive. There were no significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or scope limitations. Um, there it is, right there. So that's our unmodified opinion, and that's the best opinion that a school district can get for the financial statements. Um, we did, uh, there are a few districts that we, that we do that, uh, have an adverse or qualified opinion, but, uh, Callexico, I'm happy to say you received an unmodified opinion, which is the best that you can receive. Um, moving forward, um, all the way up to page eighty-eight, which is scrolling way down there, um, you'll see a schedule called Schedule of Financial Trends and Analysis on page eighty-eight. And what that is, is the district is required by law and by the state to um, keep a three percent reserve within the general fund. And that is a snapshot showing a, a three-year trend for the district on page eighty-eight. And I'm happy to say the district meets and/or exceeds the three percent required law. Uh, we do have a couple of districts, um, not in your county, uh, that are struggling with that. But, um, I'm happy to say the district is meeting the reserve, uh, for the general fund as outlined by the state and California Department of Education. Moving forward to page one hundred, and these are the three areas that we actually audit. We audit, we discuss the financial statements, and, uh, we had an unmodified opinion. The other two areas that we are involved in is the federal compliance and state compliance for federal grants and state grants. I'm happy to say on page one hundred that you also received a modified, uh, an unmodified opinion. Uh, again, there were no findings or weaknesses, uh, or significant deficiencies. So, uh, again, that's the best opinion that you can receive. Um, we did have one finding this year. Um, but it didn't affect the opinion. And the finding was on the, uh, just briefly on the after-school and education program. Um, the good news is there is no loss of funding. Uh, there are no, uh, question costs involved, and no, nobody's gonna have to pay any, anything back. But the state is very adamant on the number of, uh, days that are being reported for the after-school education and safety. Um, they do want us to report any days that were disallowed. And there was just a few days that were disallowed within two sites that were testing. Um, that should be rectified in the following year. Again, there's no loss of apportionment, or grant money, or anything of that nature. But state compliance is very strict. If we find one mistake out of sixty, we have to report it, believe it or not. So, um, that's not unusual. And finally, I'm happy to say on page one oh five, there was a finding in the prior year on attendance, and that has been rectified. Um, that has been implemented, as you can see, on the status. So, uh, overall, um, well done. Um, especially the, uh, the opinions. The three opinions you want in those three areas are unmodified, which you, the district did receive. So, uh, that's just a kind of a brief overview of the audit. Uh, are there any questions, uh, or comments?
Great presentation, uh, awesome job on, on staff and you. Were the work done.
Maribel and her staff were very helpful. Um, they, your district was one of the first districts that, um, the, the, uh, Maribel and her staff got things over to us. It was a little bit difficult this year due to the pandemic. We had to do a lot of remote work. Um, but, um, kudos to, uh, everybody, uh, that got us all the documents required that we could finish up the audit.
Thank you so much, sir, and just wanna echo what Mr. Romero said, Cesar, Maribel, and your staff. Thank you, guys, keep on doing the excellent work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
I move that we approve M one.
I'll second.
Prove M one, there's a second by Mr., by Mr. Alvarado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. M two, presentation and approval of fiscal year twenty, two thousand and twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-one. Second interim report.
Alright, so that's gonna be me and Maribel, so I, I will start. Um, you know, this is a rather special presentation for me, board, um, yes, sir?
Uh, can I make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven thirty? I don't think it was done, I think we extended it to eleven.
Motion to, a, motion to approve to eleven thirty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calderon Junior, all those in, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
So, a year ago, you know, you're right, we were meeting, the, the last time that I saw physically some Maribel was a year ago. You know, that was, uh, Cesar Chavez, and what we had to, both of us overcome, especially her, you know, with this whole pandemic, has been tremendous, and I will tell you, you know, board, you guys have a tremendous asset in that fiscal mind that you have right outside this door. Maribel is outstanding in what she does. And, and look, I'm only as good as I am because she is top-notch when it comes to numbers, audits. And you see, you, look, you heard it from the auditor. The level of experience and expertise that you have running your business department is second to none. I can honestly tell you that. As an experienced CBO, as someone that has been in the industry for a long time, you, you have a very good business department that knows exactly what, what needs to be done on a daily basis. So, without further ado, alright, so second interim. So, look, second interim, it's one of my favorite reports to present to the board, because this is the one report that, when you look at the budget cycle, this is the one report that really paints a better picture on how we are projecting to finish up the year. By now, this report covers seven months of the current fiscal year, through January thirty-first, or thirty, however many days, thirty-first. So, it really tells us more about, you know, where we're gonna be finishing up, and, and, you know. So it's, it's a, it's a much more accurate assessment, a much more accurate report, and it's something that we have to do every year. So by now, you're familiar with these reports that I present to you. But this particular report, in particular, it's, it's, it's a little different than what you've seen before because of all of our one-time funding. So, look, every report that we put together to start, we start these reports, uh, we build them based on a list of assumptions that are given to us by state authorities, by our local county office of ed, and, 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 you know, multiple economists, and, and universities that we follow, you know, we follow their data, we follow their trends. And, and look, we do a lot of research and homework before, you know, in, 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 in the assumptions that we use to put together this report. So, to give you some of the most relevant assumptions, is what you see before you, right here. So, look, one of the things that I do wanna start by highly, highlighting is, when you look at, you have three columns, you know, two in blue and one in red. If you look at how we, you know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, when you look at the enrollment, when you look at the average daily attendance, when you look at that number, those numbers, and then you compare those to twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, you're gonna see a big change, a big drop in numbers. And that's important, because that's gonna impact our revenues in the future. Alright? So look at the enrollment of today compared to the enrollment of twenty-two and twenty-three. Not twenty-one, twenty-two, because twenty-one, twenty-two, we are still gonna be held harmless when it comes to enrollment in ATF because of pandemic-related reasons. But not in twenty-two, and not in twenty twenty-three. So what's gonna happen then, is that we will be getting funding based upon actual numbers. And that, board, is gonna have an impact in our budget. So, just putting it out there, so the public, you can see that. Another important highlight that you need to see, they're all important, but one, one important highlight that I need to show you on the current year is that this year, we didn't receive a cola. Alright? Every expenditure, year to year, you know, accumulates. That's recurring, and it happens every year. Things go up every single year. But if we don't get revenues, at least a cola, and a cola, by the way, is nowhere near enough to offset the impact of our increased cost, operating cost from one year to the other. It's, it's just not, not enough. But when you get zero, it really impacts us, you know, fiscally. So, again, that's one point that I wanted to make. Uh, the other point that I wanted to highlight in this particular, uh, slide is the contributions to restricted programs. Restricted programs, you know, these are the contributions that, you know, programs that are not, that are required, that we offer, but we don't get enough funding. So the contributions on a yearly basis increase, and that is also impacting us when it comes to our bottom line. Alright? So, any questions on this slide, on the assumptions? Alright, so, second interim, general fund, our pot of gold, restricted and unrestricted summary. So, again, you have three columns, well, you have more than three columns, but the columns that I want you to focus on are where it says original budget. That's the budget that you, the board approved back on, uh, June twenty-fifth, June twenty-fifth of twenty twenty. Then, the last major budget update that we presented to you, which was in December, at first interim, and now second interim is the last column. And when you look at the revenue, obviously, when you adopted a budget back in June of twenty twenty, you obviously approve a budget that completely changed. Remember that, I told you that, you know what, we are approving a budget, but the numbers changed, so we have to have a budget revision. And as a result, you know, revenues increased because, you know, obviously, the governor ended up approving a different budget than, you know, we had originally anticipated. But what I'm trying to highlight here is that between that, you know, back then and now, a lot of things have changed on the revenue side. And one of the things that changed significantly is our federal funding. Look at, look at how much you approved back in, uh, uh, back in June. Ten million dollars, that was, that's what we were looking at back then. But all this one-time money, all this infusion of federal dollars, dollars that we have received, when you look at second interim, that's about eighteen million dollars more. So, but that's eighteen million dollars of one-time money, not recurring, one-time. So, at the end of the day, when you look at total revenues, you're looking at revenues, our revenues increased from a hundred and seventeen that we were, that you adopted back in, uh, June of twenty twenty, to now we're looking at revenues of about a hundred and forty-seven million. So that's quite a bit of money, quite, quite a bit of an increase. Um, any questions on this particular slide? Alright. So, expenditures. Again, expenditures, it doesn't matter what, they keep, you know, they keep going up every single year. Every July one, stepping column increases, and all these other operating expenditures increase. So, if we are not getting enough revenues, obviously then, you know, we are deficit spending. So, just like, like I said, we receive one-time funds. So obviously, we record the one-time funds as revenues, but we also have to record them, we have to put them somewhere in the expenditure side of the house. And we put them on the, on the four thousand, five thousand, six thousands, which those are your books and supplies, your services, and your capital outlet. Those are some of the things that, you know, we spread the money there, so that we can use the money for PPE purposes, uh, for the technology purchases that we made, for the border link, you know, capital outlet projects that we, you know, that we had. So that's how the money was allocated. But when you look at the overall expenditure, where we started the year, a hundred and thirty, to where we are now, a second interim, we're projecting total expenditures of about a hundred and forty-five million dollars. Okay? Any questions, comments on this slide? Alright, so, so we have, we talked about revenues, we talked about expenditures. So, when we look at whether or not we're deficit spending or not, whether or not we're living within our means, are revenues over expenditures, you know, coming in higher or lower? Well, like I said earlier, we're looking, we're looking right about an, uh, a, a, an excess of revenues of about one point nine million dollars, minus some transfers out, you're looking at a net total of about one point eight million dollars that we are projecting to finish the year on the positive, on the positive side of the house. So that one point eight million dollars, when you add that to our beginning fund balance, it gives you a new total ending fund balance of about twenty-seven million dollars. Okay? So that's what we're projecting to, you know, to finish up the current fiscal year, with about a twenty-seven million dollars of, you know, ending, ending fund balance. Did I lose you? Any questions?
No, of course, that's gonna change, because we just added nine hundred thousand plus four hundred, so you're gonna-
So yeah, so, so that, that surplus, you're right, Richard, thank you so much for bringing that up, because that surplus of one point eight million dollars, when you look at the parking lot now that you approved, when you look at the playground now that you have approved, well, that's about a million and a half right there. So that's gonna have an impact on that surplus, so it will no longer be, but, look, these are projected numbers. The books are not closed until, until they are closed. And the, the report that you will see how we close the year is called a notated actuals, and that is presented on or before September fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. So we have to get through the year. Uh, we may, you know, able, be able to save a little bit more money, but as of now, that ending fund balance, that, that excess funds that we're projecting to finish the year with, is gonna decrease. So thank you, Richard, for pointing that out.
Mr. Vega, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
With the, uh, with the money, with the monies that we are supposed to get for opening on time, can we use some, I know, I know those are one-time monies, I understand that. Uh, but is that money going into our general fund, or is that money restricted?
It is very, very, very restrictive.
Okay.
Very restrictive, it's not unrestricted funds that you can do, you can use it on whatever. It is very restrictive. Federal dollars, one-time dollars normally have strings attached.
Okay.
And that, and that money has strings attached.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so moving forward, so components of ending fund balance. So, look, this is the area that we tell the board, this is how we are allocating, you know, our, our fund balance. So, when you look at, obviously, we have a revolving cash account worth fifty thousand dollars. We have some, you know, stores, some, our inventory in the warehouse, that's how much it's worth, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Prepaid items, items that, you know, we prepaid ahead of time, that's about forty-one thousand dollars. And then some, we have some restricted funds as well, of about six hundred and ten dol- ten thousand dollars. Then, remember that we are required to have a three percent reserve of our total expenditures, while the three percent equals four million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars as of second interim. So when you take that out of our twenties plus, twenty-seven plus thousand, uh, million dollars, you're looking at a, an, at, at an unassigned, unappropriated, uh, ending fund balance of about twenty-two million dollars and ninety-one, uh, thousand. Now, please, like I said before, the on, the only reason that we are looking at that level of, of reserves is because of the one-time funding. You know, the one, like I said, one-time funds help in the current year. And if we get that money, that which we are gonna get next year, we, we are gonna get money, more one-time money, it's gonna help us next year as well. But it creates an illusion that we are doing, that we are fiscally, fiscally way better than what we really are. The true reality, and Maribel will explain that to you, the true, the true reality, you will be able to see that in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, when she presents, uh, the multi-year projection, part of the presentation. But I just wanna make sure that the board understands, and the public, because, look, we fiscally, technically, we're doing good this fiscal year, and next year. But when we see the reality, more importantly, on the declining in enrollment, look, we are projecting to lose hundreds, hundreds of kids. Look, we're dipping like that. And, and from the last year that we had a really high enrollment, which was, uh, school year eighteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we were looking at over ninety-two, ninety-three hundred students, and ever since, we have continued to dip. We have continued to dip. And, you know, we're projected to lose by twenty-six, twenty-seven, over a thousand, two hundred kids. I mean, that's a lot of kids and a lot of revenue that we're losing. Just to hypothetically speaking, if you, if we average ten thousand dollars per student, and we lose a thousand kids, I mean, that's ten million dollars that we're losing revenues. Alright? And remember, we're losing revenues, but our operating expenditures keep doing, keep increasing, right? Because, you know, stepping column increases happen every year, insurance rates, they go up every year. I mean, there are things that we have no say, no control. The expenditure side of the house, it just keeps going up and up and up. But right now, our revenues continue to go down and down and down. And the biggest reason is because of our decline in enrollment. There are other factors that we will talk about later, but that is the single most critical reason why- critical reason why we are losing so much money because of that. Does that make sense? All right, so. Look, I always like to put a pie chart, makes my presentations look better, but in reality, it just talks about the same thing that I just shared with you. When it comes to revenues, so that you can see where most of our revenues come from, the local control funding formula, seventy percent of it. Federal, it's only nineteen percent. This year is a little bit higher, it's normally lower because of the one-time money. Normally, that's in the seven, eight percent. Uh, then you look at other state revenues, like grants on the gray, and then you look at, you know, local money, local grants, local, uh, funds that we get locally. So expenditures, right now, when you look at the biggest, you know, expenditures, uh, blue is our certificated, gray is our benefits, and then the orange, that's our classified. When you look at those three, you're looking at, what, seventy-one percent of our budget goes exclusively to our salaries and benefits. Seventy-one percent of our entire budget goes to salaries and benefits, right now. But the percentage is higher. The reason why it's lower right now, seventy-one percent, one-time monies, one-time funds. Remember, one-time funds help in the current year, the year that is given, but it inflates our numbers, and it creates the wrong illusion. All right? But that's not sustainable. Any questions on this? All right, so, Maribel, you're next. Don't be afraid.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Mr. Gonzalez and everyone joining us tonight. Uh, for the record, I'm Mayor Bell Pies, and the Business Manager for Callexico Unified School District. So our multi-year projections, as part of our budget process, we do need to, uh, put together a multi-year projection. And our multi-year projection is actually built out of our, um, most updated assumptions, just like Mr...
I think we're there? Wasn't I supposed to talk about that one?
Yes.
Oh, what was the fault? Oh, my fault? Sorry. Sorry, sorry, board. Sorry, my fault. All right, so, we talked about SB eighty-six. So these dollars, because they were just approved by, by the governor, that, uh, the A B eighty-six bill, these numbers are not part of our budget yet, right?
Exactly.
So these are not contemplated in our budget yet, but they will, all right? All right, multi-year projection. Sorry, Maribel, sorry. I'm just excited to see what you got.
So as explaining, our multi-year projections is actually built out of, uh, the most updated key assumptions. Uh, so for example, um, we see our twenty-twenty-one, uh, we actually, uh, we have the hundred and forty-seven, uh, million dollars on revenues. Uh, if, if we actually compare to our twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, first interim report, we actually presented about a hundred and twenty-five million, um, on revenue. And the, the big change was after our Governor's Board, um, Governor's Budget Proposal, uh, in our December, uh, late December, uh, two thousand and twenty, he actually approved an ESER two, uh, which is our elementary and, and secondary school elementary, uh, emergency relief fund of eighteen million. So those eighteen million were actually not part of our first interim yet, as we were not aware of those fundings. So if you compare our first interim back in December to, uh, what we're presenting today, it's actually a difference of, uh, about twenty-two million. So that is actually a difference of our ESER two funds that we're just aware of in late December, plus our COLA increase, the governor is proposing a three point eighty-four COLA increase for two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. So that's the difference of the increase from first interim to second interim on our revenues. Now regarding our twenty-two, uh, twenty-three, um, we're actually reflecting from first interim to second interim, a, actually, a hundred and twenty-three million, um, dollars, and this is, uh, around one point three million less than what we actually, um, uh, presented in first interim. And this is actually, uh, due to the, um, ADA, to the current ADA that we're experiencing. Right now, we are actually budgeting a ADA of eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine. But for twenty-two, twenty-three, we will be, um, or that's the estimation of our ADA, will be eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-six. This is five hundred and three less ADA that we will be, um, that is estimated for, for, to be in, in twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. So what is, uh, the, um, the, the district facing? Uh, and a lot of the CBOs is calling it the big cliff, uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three. Well, the district is no longer expecting to receive any more one-time federal funds. As of now, we're not aware of anything, um, not receiving, uh, one-time, um, federal, um, grants for twenty-two, twenty-three. For twenty-two, twenty-three, we no longer be held harmless for ADA, so we're gonna have to use our true ADA in enrollment. And we actually have, um, so it's, our twenty-two, twenty-three is actually a true impact of our budget. If, if, what CBOs are saying that twenty-two, twenty-one and, and twenty-one, twenty-two, those numbers are being, um, inflated, and the one-time funds have been mitigating some of our expenditures. But, um, the truth is that twenty-two, twenty-three is actually a better picture of how our budget looks. Now, um, in regards to expenditures, uh, for twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one, as Mr. Vega explained, uh, it's about one hundred and forty-five million dollars, uh, that we're projecting. If, under, for first interim, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we are projecting a hundred and forty-six million dollars. It's more or less pretty much a status quo as twenty-twenty-one. And the reason is because we, like I mentioned previously, that we were just aware of ESER two funding that the district will be receiving, and that's about eighteen million dollars that we're gonna be receiving soon. For twenty-two, twenty-three, um, the total expenditure is a hundred and thirty-one million dollars. So we combine our revenues versus our expenditures. For two thousand and twenty-one, as Mr. Vega explained, we have a surplus of one point eight million. For twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we have a surplus of one point four. And let me just say that, for, under first, for first interim, we presented a deficit spending for twenty-one, twenty-two of about four point five million. And the big change, again, from the first interim to the second interim, was the proposed COLA by the Governor Newsom, plus the ESER two funding that we will be receiving for twenty-one, twenty-two. So we're no longer projecting a deficit spending for twenty-one, twenty-two until twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, any questions?
No.
Regarding our NYPD?
I know you guys are going to hate me. Where, where did you get the, the, the number of our ADA declining? How did you get to that, to that number?
Okay.
So we get, um, multiple ways, but we, we have professional projections created, you know, for us. And, and we provide all the data. So we have data in our Calpat system, as we, you know, certify our records, you know, we certify them with state. All of that data, we, we send it to a consultant, Schoolworks, that specializes in enrollment projections. But we also follow the cohort. When we follow, you know, the, you know, the prior years, kinder class, obviously, the prior year kinder class will become kinders, our kinders this year, and kinders this year will become, uh, first graders and on and on, and second graders, we become third graders, third graders, we become fourth graders, and on and on. So we follow the model that is cohort, we follow the cohort. So when we look at our, our cohort numbers, and when we look at our, you know, the projection of babies coming in or new kids coming in, you know, we are graduating bigger classes than kids coming into the system. So, so that's why you'll see our numbers decline. And, and, and if you think about it, it kind of makes sense, because locally here, we haven't had any major redevelopment over many years, many years. We haven't had ten thousand, or one thousand, or five hundred new homes, you know, built, that, that, that will attract new families, new kids to our district. Uh, the last time that we had that was, I think, when Caesar Chavez, I think, was built. But this is not a Callexico-only issue. The state in itself has declined in, in enrollment. I mean, we are, I think it's about sixty percent of districts in the state are declining in enrollment. So it's nothing new, but just the facts are the facts. So we have professional projections done, because look, in order for us to put these numbers together, we need to have the most accurate data that we can possibly have. And enrollment is a big one that we look at. So we go through that process, Mr. Carolina. Thank you.
So, Mr. Carolina, just to add to what Mr. Vega is mentioning, um, we do have our, our enrollment. If you can see, we're using our ADA for, uh, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, at eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine. However, twenty-two and twenty-three, we are decreasing to eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-six. And pretty much what, what we do, uh, based on the enrollment projections, we just do a multiplication of point eighty-six percent, which is absentism, because we do have to add our absentism to our ADA. So that's more how we make the calculations. Okay, so, um, just, um, to bring it back, uh, to the board, and just as a first interim, just to give you an update on our cash referrals. We actually started our cash referrals in, uh, last month, February. So as you can see, um, our cash referral started February up all the way to Ju, to June, and this is about twenty-nine million dollars in cash referral that we're gonna be facing, um, for this five months. So the district will be issuing a tax revenue anticipation note, a trans through the California School Finance, um, CSFA in April, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of twenty million dollars. Any questions regarding cash referrals?
No.
If I can just add to that, Maribel, the good thing, that there's a good thing in all this, is that we were facing the same scenario in twenty-one, twenty-two, cash referral. But that's no longer the case because of unexpected revenues came in a lot higher than anticipated. So we're not facing that, that again.
Only this year. That's yours.
Oh, all right, my turn.
Okay, so. Look, we talked about declining enrollment, I think. I, I don't know if there's anything else that you need to know or understand about the fact that we are declining in enrollment significantly, but just to re- reiterate, uh, look, from eighteen, nineteen, if you look at the last major class, graduating class, and I think that was the only class that I actually participated graduation at, you know, that was the last time that I physically did that. Uh, ever since, we have continued to decline. And if you look at the numbers by twenty-six, twenty-seven, I mean, we are projecting to lose over one thousand, two hundred and forty students. All right? So that has a huge impact in our budget. Look, I was able to negotiate, or we were able to negotiate, you know, Brian, myself, Mr. Gonzalez, you know, the team, with our insurance carrier, carrier to not increase our rates next year. But the fact of the matter is that insurance rates continue to go up, and they will be going up in, for twenty-two, twenty-three. Right now, we have some certainty for twenty-one, twenty-two, and again, we have a zero increase, same plan, same benefits will remain, but it's only for one more year. But do expect to see an increase for twenty, uh, twenty-two and twenty-three. Cost of living adjustment, as I shared with the board, we didn't get anything in the current year. Mr. Carolina, you had a question? Oh, so we didn't get any COLA this year. We are projecting to get a COLA next year, twenty-one, twenty-two, three point eight four percent. But look, that is the number that has been given to us. But the fact of the matter is that there's a different reality at the end of the tunnel. Remember, we are funded, our school districts in California are funded based on how the economy does. Thus far, the economy has rebounded better than anticipated, but we're in the middle of a recession. Unemployment is still pretty high. We don't know where we, you know, where we're gonna be two, three months from now, hopefully better. But all I'm telling you is that the COLA, it is a projection. It is not a reality. It is not a reality until the, until the governor approved the state budget and the legislatures approved it at the end of June. Until then, we won't know what the real number is. But thus far, our multi-year projection for twenty-one, twenty-two is built upon that number, three point eight four percent. Okay? So Stirs and Purse, look, board, I, you know, the Stirs and Purse pension rates have increased over the last ten years. They have increased so much that, like I shared with you before, even though we get a COLA, to be honest with you, a COLA is nowhere near enough for us to offset the total operating cost from one year to the other. It's nowhere near enough. And, you know, and I think I put it down below, you know, if you, we do a quick, you know, mathematics, when you look at stepping column increases, that's about a million and, and a quarter every year, from just from one year to the other. And when, when you look at, you know, what we're declining enrollment from this year to, to the next, we're looking at about one point three million. Uh, when, you know, when we look at workers' comp cases, I mean, look, COLA is not enough, what we're getting COLA is not enough to offset the impact of our operating costs from one year to the other. That's just the reality. It never is. Uh, I talked about underfunded programs. We are, we have programs that we are required to provide funded for, funding for, but we don't get enough funds for them. And the general fund has to make a contribution to those programs. Okay? Uh, that, that has a, you know, every year, they keep increasing. Stepping column increase, we use an average of two percent, or one point two five million dollars approximately every year. Pension plan, uh, pending negotiations, so again, we are in the middle of negotiations. We haven't talked about numbers yet, we're talking about reopening, obviously, we're dealing with that pandemic. But look, we haven't settled with our unions. We are behind. So that's something to keep in mind, because at some point, there might be an economic impact that we have to make adjustments for in the future. Uh, workers' comp rates, we continue to experience higher-than-average numbers. And, and look, the COVID pandemic, just as it came in unexpectedly, I can tell you that coming out of our recession, it always takes time. It's not gonna be a one, two, three-year cycle, and here we're back to normal, although the economy continues to do better in certain areas than, better than others. But at the end of the day, this is a recession, and we don't know when we're gonna be getting out of it. At the end of the day, we have to put together a plan to stabilize our budget, especially for twenty-two, twenty-three. And we have to do that now. We, as business folks, we can only do so much. We're, we're not experts, we're not experts on the curriculum side of the house, we're not experts on personnel. We're, look, we can only do so much, this is a team effort. This is from HR to Ed Services to the superintendent, we all have to contribute to put together a plan and bring it to you, the board, and, and, and tell you, this is what we need to do to mitigate the impact of losing so many kids, so many students. So we have to do that. But look, we have a little bit of time, this one-time monies are giving us a little bit of time, but the reality is that we have a major structural deficit that we're facing, especially for twenty-two, twenty-three, and we have to do something about it, otherwise, look, we're gonna be running out of cash three, four years if we don't do anything about it. And, and I keep emphasizing declining enrollment, because that is the single biggest reason why this is happening. All right, I know it's late, sorry. Any more questions?
Thank you, congratulations, excellent report to you and to Maribel. We're very fortunate to have you on our team.
Fair. Woo, Maribel, good for you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you both so much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, so we have, uh, M two, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So mo, motion by Romero, second by Calderon Junior, others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. M three, agreement between Callexico Unified School District and Western Environmental and Safety Technologies, LLC for concentration services and preparation of asbestos. And lately, uh, lead paint removal specifications for the replacement and removal of six buildings at the Callexico High School. Motion by Mr. Calderon Junior.
Second.
Second by Mr. Romero, others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. M four, agreement between Callexico Unified School District and National University for unpaid student teaching, field experience, and practical, practical agreement for March two thousand and twenty-one to, to March two thousand and twenty-six, the school years. Motion by Mr. Calderon Junior.
Second.
Second by Mr. Romero, others in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes five-zero. And five, agreement between Callexico Unified School District and pending post, for postage machine at district office. Motion by Mr. Calderon Junior, second by Mr. Calderon, others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. M seven, oh no, M six, agreement between Callexico Unified School District and the school facility consultants for services regarding developer fee justification reports.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Romero.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calderon Junior, others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. M seven, agreement, agreement amendment for services between Callexico Unified School District and presence learned... and presence learn, presence learning and online special education services provider for the provision of additional speech services from March oh-two, two thousand and twenty to June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Motion by, motion by Mr. Romero? Or Calderon Junior, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. M-eight, agreement between Callexico Unified School District and Imperial Valley College offering courses in college and career access pathways, a dual enrollment partnership for the two thousand twenty-one dash, two thousand twenty-three academic school year.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Calderon Junior. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. M-nine, agreement between Callexico Unified School District and ESGI LLC for suffer suppression for this, this school year and for the two thousand twenty dash, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one dash, two thousand twenty-two school year.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Calderon Junior. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. M-ten, contract and engagement letter between Callexico Unified School District and Wilkinson Harley King LLC for fiscal years two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Romero.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calderon Junior. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. M-eleven, Rosetta Stone online license and subscriptions for expanded learning parents.
So moved.
Motion by, uh, Ms., uh,
Magallanes.
Uh, uh, Ms. Magallanes. Second by Mr. Calderon Junior. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. M-twelve, notice of completion for the Callexico High School's school re-roofing of the welding building project.
I do, what's the warranty on this roof?
Oh my goodness, you kept me off guard on that one, Mr. Calderon. I need to find out, to be honest with you. Let me, let me make a quick text, maybe I can find out, but it has to be at least twenty years. Sorry, I, I don't have that info with me. Let me get that for you.
I will be approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Calderon Junior. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. That was M-two. M-thirteen, approval of, of two thousand twenty-one dash, two thousand twenty-two instructional school calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Magallanes, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. M-fourteen, resolution regarding disposition of surplus as asset, non-acero office furniture.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Ms. Magallanes. Roll call, Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Magallanes.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Calderon Junior and myself, yes, motion, uh, resolution passes five-zero. M-fifteen, resolution authorizing contract pursuant to Public Contract Code Section twenty-one-one-eight, piggyback statute, and approve correlating agreements with Dave Bank Associates Incorporated and TJ Janka Construction Incorporated for S. Chavez Elementary School Kinder and Primary Yards.
So moved.
Uh, I heard, Mr. Calderon Junior, second by,
Ms. Magallanes.
Ms. Magallanes. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. Oh, roll call.
Yes.
I'm sorry, roll call, Ms. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Magallanes.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Calderon Junior and myself, yes, motion passes five-zero. M-sixteen, resolutions authorizing contract pursuant to California Multiple Award Schedule Number four dash, fifteen dash, seventy-eight dash, zero-zero, one-three-E, and approve correlating agreements with Dave Banks Associates Incorporated for the Kennedy Gardens Elementary School Kinder, Primary, and Upper Yards.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Calderon Junior. Roll call, Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Magallanes.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Calderon Junior and myself, yes, motion passes five-zero. M-seventeen, search for employment report, Carlos.
Recommend that the board approve the certificated employment report as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, uh, second by Mr. Calderon Junior. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. M-eighteen, classified employment report, Carlos.
And we recommend that the board approve the classified employment report as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Calderon Junior. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. Recommend for a closed session, we're not going to recommend to, to close session. Uh, item P, announcement of actions taken in closed session, none. Q, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Calderon Junior. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero, good night.